Both Luke and Jared, they reached out and said they're running a little bit behind. So we will start the meeting, waiting for, hoping for them to come in. We do have a quorum. Okay, but they'll be here sooner than we think. Alright, so I'd like to call this meeting to order today, Tuesday, February 6th at 7:00 PM. This is a virtual meeting of the city of Mount Rainier. We have Valerie Woodall.
I'm here.
Danielle Carter.
Here.
And Luke and Jared are on their way. Valerie, as our senior council member of the group right now, I will need you guys lead the pledge allegiance and then I'll move on to number two. Okay, can you lead it for us, please? Valerie.
Sorry, my computer was moving all around. Um, yes.
Sounds like we lost Valerie. Goodbye, quorum. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Valerie. We'll move on to item number two, review of the agenda. Five minutes, mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest and discussion. So Valerie, you're it.
Okay, uh, one call to order, pledge of allegiance, we just did that. Um, two, review of the agenda, five minutes. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Mayor and coun- um, number three, mayor and council event announcements. Number four, introduction of the new member of the legal team, fifteen minutes. City Attorney Alyssa Levin will introduce attorney Lynn Board, the new member of her legal team to the mayor and council. Five, presentation and discussion on code compliance department's second quarter report, fifteen minutes. The mayor and council will receive a presentation from Ms. Alma Farafino, Director of Code Compliance. Number six, um, presentation and discussion on economic development set up in quarter report, fifteen minutes. The mayor and council will receive a presentation from Mr. Ronald Hopkins, Director of Economic Development. Number seven, presentation and discussion on police department's second quarter report, fifteen minutes. The mayor and council will receive a presentation from Mr. Linwood Austin, Chief of Police. And eight, um, public comment, please see page three of agenda where the rules and public con- uh, rules for public comment are listed. Um, yeah, um, old business, number nine, ARPA discussion and update, number thirty-five, twenty minutes. The mayor and council will discuss the status of projects and Vice Mayor Luke will give, um, an update on the consideration of ARPA funding for business assistance during construction for the thirty-three, thirty-third, thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue and Perry Street. Mayor Selena Benitez will have a discussion on nonprofit community grants for all the nonprofit organizations that work with the city. Um, number ten, proclamation and recognition and celebration of Black History Month, ten minutes. Uh, Mayor Selena Benitez will present proclamation for Black History Month. New business, number eleven, vote on the approval of minutes, five minutes. The mayor and council will vote on approving the minutes, November 7th, 2023 legislative meeting, uh, December 5th, public meeting on public safety and legislative meeting, uh, December 19th, uh, 2023 work session, and January 2nd, um, 2024 legislative meeting. And number twelve is adjournment.
Excuse me, Mayor, one, I have a correction. I think this, they have a mistake on here. Just give me one second, please.
Okay, go ahead, Meli. Uh, one thing for my item, Meli, I didn't say for all nonprofits in the city, it's for the nonprofits, for nonprofits in the city. I don't want them to think it's like all. It might be too, there may be a lot more than we think. Okay? Since, of, and Luke, um, we do know you're here. I spotted Megan, got happy, and then it was you. All right, uh, Ophelia, I do see you, so, okay, that's what it is. I was like, Ophelia, did somebody steal your identity? But we have an explanation. Says, I will speak, uh, for Ms. Baxter. Um, she's asking for the floor during public comment and she's using, okay, Aisha, Aisha?
Aisha.
That's what it was. I saw your photo. I was so like, wait a minute, somebody like popping in as, as unknown, recognized face as Ms. Ophelia Baxter, thinking nobody's gonna know who that is? But now we know who's here.
This is the correct number eleven, sorry.
You got it?
Yeah, so this is the correct number eleven.
Okay, perfect. And then you deleted that on the ARPA fund, the all, right? Where, uh, my says grants for all the nonprofits, like, you know, grants for the nonprofits in the city. So just wanna make sure I don't give the false solution is, I mean, all coapply, but, but, you know, um, not all might be awarded. Alright, perfect. So there was two minor edits, uh, number eleven as stated, and the removal of the all. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two minor changes?
Some moved.
He's probably moved, and I'll second any discussion. Obsection. Hearing, uh, none. The agenda is proved as submitted. Okay? Can you go all the way up, Meli? And thank you, Valerie, for, for reading the agenda. I guess Luke, uh, came in halfway, but I didn't wanna interrupt your momentum, you know? It looks, looks like quiet until the last item. I'm here. Thank you, Luke. Alright, perfect. We're moving on to item number three, mayor and council member events announcements. Alright, so Valerie, I'm gonna give you the floor first, followed by, uh, Danielle Carr, and followed by, uh, Luke. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, so I think the main things to announce are the Gateway CDC and the Gateway Media Arts Lab, um, are teaming up with a, they have a number of that, events coming up. Um, I think the first two are February 15th and February 28th. They're, um, teaming up for the Joe's Dirty Lab, um, for artists, um, talks and, and events. Um, and then February 29th, at the Gateway Media Arts Lab, around 5:30 in the evening, there will be a screening, um, uh, by a, a famous, uh, video, um, uh, artist, um, called My Brother's Journey by Miniotte. Um, and so that will be happening on February 29th at the Gateway Media Arts Lab as well. So that's, those are my events for now.
And this is for Black History Month, correct?
Correct.
Like partnering with the cities and Joes as well.
Yep, and there'll be more information coming out, um, for events spanning all three cities as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I wanna make sure that information goes out. I, I love them to death, but it took a little longer than I wanted to. Alright, thank you, Valerie, for all. Um, go on, uh, was it Danielle, then Luke? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for Black History Month, I'm doing a series of interviews with Mount Rainier artists and business owners. These interviews will be posted on my various social media outlets and websites through the month. If you are a black business owner or artist here in Mount Rainier and would like to be included, please send me an email at decarter@mountreiniermd.org. The CERT, um, also, the CERT had a fantastic turnout for the community CPR and first aid class. Um, so thank you to the community for your interest, and, uh, the waitlist was huge. Um, the CERT is working on planning another class that will be done and offered strictly in Spanish, so please stay tuned for the announcement on that. Um, the CERT would also like to extend an invitation to their next meeting to anyone in the community who has an interest in learning how to be prepared for an emergency, whether it is for themselves or to help a neighbor, or just to stay in the loop of information. The next CERT meeting will be held on Monday, February the 26th, at 7:30 PM in the police station, David. Thank you.
Luke, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, signs are here for the native plant network. Um, if you've been certified, um, uh, you should have received an email to pick them up. Um, if you have any questions, uh, you can email me, alcheswick@mountreiniermd.org, and we can make sure that, um, you can get your sign, but I think most people have picked them up, so appreciate that. Um, we're, we've also sent code compliance, the updated list of those who are members of the native plant network. Um, so that way, uh, you know, the way that, uh, the way we've reformed our code is members of the native plant network are presumed to be in compliant um, with our landscaping code, um, unless there's a violation of, um, or, or risk to health and, and safety uh, or encroachment on your neighbor's property. Um, and then on March, we are looking at a date. We're working with folks who helped volunteer to create the food forest, to do a cleanup, uh, in the Forest Trail. Um, we're looking at March 23rd right now. The date's not final, um, but we'll work, uh, with PINK to make sure that once the date is final, um, we can get into the city's communications and make sure that the, uh, community knows when there's a cleanup day there. And I think that's it.
Thank you so much. Yeah, let me know, cause I'll send it over to the Girl Scouts as well, um, just in case any of them wanna do their volunteer hours. Uh, me or Valerie, we both have, uh, Girl Scouts. Alright, um, I don't see Jared here, but he did alert, he's gonna be running a little bit late. Um, so thank you, guys, for holding back, uh, the wonderful news. We had a wonderful, uh, press conference. I know, Luke, I'm doing the same exact thing. After Annapolis, I'm like, basically like drinking and trying to eat water. Uh, but, um, so we had a wonderful press conference hosted by Congressman Glenn Ivey. Um, due to our $9.7 million, the largest grant that the city has ever been awarded. And for point of information, we have said this before, the largest grant, uh, for implementation that the state of Maryland received in this round. So alone, it was more than $10,000, $10 million, $10,600 plus that, um, between Mount Rainier, Branwood, um, Riverdale Park, and, um, Emistown with 9.7, nine point, a little bit over 9.7 being, uh, city of Mount Rainier. So it's a lot of, uh, good press, both in Spanish and English and radio. We've been getting a lot of positive feedback of, um, of how do you call it, um, people hearing us in the radio and stuff, so that's in TV as well. A big thank you to Thomas Stone Elementary, that's where the press conference was held. They were fantastic partners, as well as the PTOs, Mount Rainier and Thomas Stone PTO that were also present. Uh, we had the councils from Branwood, Riverdale Park, Emistown. We also had our board member, Pamela Boozer Schröder, who has also been key in, uh, pushing safety streets as well. Let me see who else. Our delegation was there, Delegate Fennell, Delegate Ivey. Uh, County Council Member, Juanika Fisher, was also there, and, um, US Department of Commerce, uh, Secretary, Department of Council of Maryland, uh, Secretary was also, Winfield was also there. I had the honor to, um, welcome, uh, the resident elected officials to the city. So overall, I am very happy for the work this team has put together. Thank you collectively to everyone that worked on this, from our wonderful staff led by, you know, our city manager, obviously Jared, Luke, our whole entire task force, um, from the Green Team and so on. I mean, it's been a lot of work. The next step is like, we're waiting for more documents to come, and our team will sign them off and submit them and start, um, some of the network. So that's been like the biggest, the, the biggest news for the week. So we're very excited to see that, and thank you to, um, again, to our wonderful representative Glenn Ivey for being so supportive through the process of like writing letters, but also like, you know, they make sure they're voted, obviously to President Biden for making the money available. This will, we've been fighting, uh, when it comes to the Maryland Municipal League, the National Legal Cities, quite a few organizations that we belong to, right? When it comes to accessibility to funds, so that way directly the cities coapply. That way, it gives us a better, um, opportunity to like, implement them into our city in direct, kinda like ARPA funding equivalent. Uh, so point of information, the city has to do a 20% match, so there's city money that's gonna be put into that. But it's been a lot of, um, great effort and makes us very happy. Uh, the other announcement, I've, um, the legislative season has started. We are in week four, I believe. We have so many more weeks to go. But I was able to, um, testify today, and I'll be testifying on Thursday. On Thursday, we have, um, the bill regarding, uh, stop cameras. I know that we are in favor of, um, you know, our Representative, uh, Hilly's, uh, bill. The council actually supported a letter that we voted on that was sent to the Pre-Georgia's County delegation, so I dust off the letter, make the proper changes, and the testimony, written testimony got submitted. And I'll be able to speak on it on Thursday, and the importance on, on why, um, the cameras, um, are very, very important. You know, so that is, uh, key when it comes to that, uh, for the grants. I think you could go to a website, Ophelia. But, um, other than that, for announce, I'm gonna like, if you guys go to my Facebook page, they're there. Um, I was in Annapolis today again. I spent quite a bit of time making sure, you know, um, you know, our voice is heard, and we do have a good team. Uh, so we have been able to testify, I've been able to testify in the tourist bill that allows the cities to, you know, create a tourist area zone if they saw wish so, which is, um, good, because that would give us the autonomy that if the city of Maryland decides to do that, we have the power to do it, right? If it passes, you know, it's only gone to one of the chambers right now. And today was, um, there's a bill that, it does quote unquote not target one city, it's not ours, but regarding late audits. And I went to express to the legislation what our process was for the last seven years. Luke, you remember this very well, when we first got here. And, uh, penalty right now is like, if you be, if you delay for one year, 20% of your police, uh, budget from the federal grant, uh, HURs and so on, so on, will be cut. So explain to them that it took us a lot of time, a lot of staffing from rounds and everything else, that it wasn't done overnight. We're like, very happy, Mr. Kamali, thank you for, team for also doing this as well. Two years submitting our audits on time, but missing one staff member could delay those audits. So that's, uh, kinda where we're at right now, and, and I'm gonna go back on next week, again, to do the other chamber to express, um, how we need to be accountable, but the reality is like, if all that money's taken away from any municipality, whether we're right now in the right side of, you know, the right side of where we need to be, it could be very defermential on it. So explain to them what it means for a municipality if that much money is taken away from them. Because that means like, um, that could easily mean a salary of an officer, that goes to means streets and sidewalks not being repaired, while we pay thousands of dollars in trying to get our audits. So that's my, um, quick, um, quick recap of what I've, a lot of things that I've been doing. And any events that you guys need to follow me, tomorrow I'm gonna go to talk to students getting their, uh, GED when it comes to careers, and what is the role of a mayor, and how to get involved in the community and pursue higher education and other outlets. So that is, uh, mine. And in the next few weeks, before we see each other, I'll be attending the elementary schools to be able to work with them in our junior mayor program, this Richardson Park, as we're finalizing the last details, and get their feedback, their fine, their more or less final feedback, and be able to complete our banner city requirement for MML, but also make sure we're fully engaged with them. And lastly, the scholarship applications are available. Please reach out if you have any questions to our wonderful clerk, and they're also on the website. So, uh, cityclerk@mountreiniermd.org, right, Meli? Yes? So you could reach out to if you have any question. If you have any questions, you could reach out to me, but they have to go in directly to the city portal. Does the council members, mayor, we're no longer taking emails to our personal email addresses, that we are creating portals through the city. So that way, the staff has this information as we continue building information, because the keeper of this information should be the city manager and his team. Mr. Kamali's like, yes. Alright, perfect. Alright, so I'm gonna leave it at that, okay? Alright, so moving on to the next item. We're very excited to introduce the new member of our legal team, City Attorney Alyssa Levin, who's been with us for quite a bit. We introduce attorney Lynn Board, the new member of her legal team, to mayor and council and the community. So Alyssa, it's wonderful, it's wonderful to see you. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
It's lovely to see all of you. I don't, uh, I don't, uh, get to have my face in front of you all that often. So thank you for giving us this spot on your agenda, um, for, because the public doesn't hear me very often. I am gonna introduce Lynn, but first I'm just gonna say that you have a legal team, um, comprised of now, um, primarily three strong women, um, who have been practicing municipal law for decades. Um, Lynn is no exception. She comes to us from the city of Gaithersburg, um, where she served for, for quite a long time. She, um, has skills and experience that are equivalent to mine and Karen Raff's, your other, uh, attorney. Um, and we are thrilled to have her, grateful that she's gonna allow us to be more responsive to our clients. Um, and I will let her take it from here and tell you a little bit more about herself.
Thanks, Alyssa, and, uh, good evening, mayor and council. Again, my name is Lynn Board. I am the newest attorney with Levin and Raff, although I've known, uh, Alyssa and Karen for many, many years through the MML and the Maryland Municipal Attorneys Association. Um, I have just recently retired from the city of Gaithersburg, where I served as their in-house, uh, attorney for the last sixteen years. Um, prior to that, I was in private practice and represented the towns of Middletown and Thurmont up in Frederick County. And prior to that, it's gonna make myself sound very old, but, um, prior to that, I served 11 years as in-house counsel for the city of Frederick. So, um, pretty much all of my career has been in the municipal world. Um, I did do a little bit of private practice in my early days, and, you know, certainly realized early on that, that, uh, local government and serving the public was where my interests lay. So, um, you know, that's kind of what I've done throughout my career. Um, but again, I'm very happy to join Alyssa and Karen. Um, they are, uh, both have excellent reputations in the municipal world. And, uh, when I was kind of looking for a place to land after I retired from Gaithersburg, they were certainly my, my first choice of a place to go. Um, so I'm very happy to be working with you all, and hopefully we'll see you all on a more regular basis. But, um, you know, we are, uh, both myself, Alyssa and Karen are here to help you in any way that we can. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Perfect. Thank, I know, so like, I think I seen you somewhere. I remember that, and you have worked with two of my favorite mayors too, so. Both O'Connor and, uh, Judd are, are good friends of mine, so that makes me happy. I'll be texting both of them to let them know.
I did, I did, I did predate, I, I know Michael O'Connor very well, cause I'm also a Frederick City resident, but, um, I did predate his time in office. So when I knew him, he was, uh, he was not an elected official, but, uh, certainly I've kept in touch with him through the years. But you may have seen me, cause, um, again, I've been very active at MML, done a couple, you know, done trainings at the summer conference. Um, I'm a prior president of the Maryland Municipal Attorneys Association, so, um, I've worked very closely with MML and their staff through the years.
Perfect. And Alyssa and I definitely work very close with MML. We're both board members as well, so we're like, we suffer together. Alright, perfect. So council, do you guys have, um, any questions? And Lynn, I apologize, like, welcome to the team and welcome as part of like our, our, our city. We're happy to have somebody with so much experience, and experience in municipal, um, is very important, both sides of it, both legal and, you know, and in-house as well. Alright, uh, council, we're good. Any, anybody needs to open their mic, let me know. Good? I think we're good, so cohesively we had the city of Rainier. Thank you, and we love to have you, and we would like you to go do your wonderful work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Wonderful to see you, okay?
Have a lovely evening, all of you.
Okay, bye.
Good night.
Alright, moving on to the next item, presentation and discussion in code compliance department's second quarter report. Mayor and council received a presentation from, um, from Director Alma Farafino, uh, from Co-Compliance. Alright, Ms. Farafino, welcome. You have been, you've been, you've, you're here a lot of the times, Alma. So I'm, I'm glad you're here for that report today, and I'll be on and answering my mic, guys, cause I do need to eat. I came straight to, from Annapolis to pick up my child, and I hadn't eaten yet. Alright, go ahead, Alma.
Well, good evening, uh, mayor, city council, um, city manager and residents. Thank you for having me here today. Um, we're here to present the quarterly report for code compliance, um, for October through December, FY 2023. Um, 24, I'm sorry. Um, let me just start by saying that, um, code compliance has been, um, very busy this past few months. Um, we've had, um, in addition to our, um, department, um, we just brought in a new inspector. Um, his name is John Leddo, and, um, he's actually coming in with, um, an extensive background in customer service, um, no, um, code actually, um, in him at all, but he has, um, very, he's very knowledgeable in IT matters. Um, and has been a great addition so far, uh, learning so fast and actually, um, contributing so many things to the department where, um, him and Inspector Jesse are making so much progress and so many things that we're, um, implementing in the department, which is, um, you know, making, uh, the city, uh, better in, I guess, every way, which makes me happy, because I know it's a long-term commitment that we've had, um, since I started back seven years ago. Um, just wanted to let you know that we did promise, uh, mayor and council at some point that we would definitely take care of a lot of the backlogs when it came to, um, the inspection of our rental units for, um, rental apartment properties. Um, we've been ac- actually moving so fast where I can say that code compliance has reached inspection in a lot of their, um, smaller units, where a hundred percent of all the units have been inspected. Um, we're talking about Arundel Park Apartments, Arundel Arms, um, Artist Loft, which, to me, um, you know, it's, um, one of the properties also, as well as, um, Bunker Hill Flats, um, needed, uh, 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 very much, um, you know, very complete, um, inspection because of, um, the units and, and the places, and, um, to make sure that the tenants are definitely, uh, being taken care of. I'm happy to say that we're moving along. Um, our biggest apartments are also, um, getting completed. Queens Manor Apartments, um, has been completed. Newton Square Apartments has been completed. Um, the only thing we're doing right now is actually giving the, um, properties time to actually get all the violations, um, in compliance, and we'll be issuing their, um, license finally. So, um, the only two other left, um, to do are the two biggest properties that we have. As you know, we have Queenstown Apartments that has 751 units, um, to do, and Kwood Garden Apartments, which is the biggest one of all. Um, we're talking about 916 units. Um, let me just assure you that, uh, we decided to go ahead and do a hundred percent of the units, um, which is, I know it's a lot of work, um, for the two inspectors, uh, but nonetheless, it's something that was, um, we've been, you know, working along, making sure that we're doing the right connections, and also making the right decisions in, in the way that we're moving forward with, um, how we're doing the things. So happy to say that. how we're doing the things. So happy to say that uh as promised um to Mayor and Council and Residents, um we are making a difference. Uh we have a team right now that's very strong, very committed. Um as you know, I've said from the beginning, it's something that definitely um to my heart, I wanted to bring that to to the residents of Marinier, um something that's been asked for. Um Code Compliance has been attending many different trainings. I had the opportunity of actually um enjoying um the I C C Conference, which is the International Code Council Conference back in um October. It was the greatest experience. Um I took a couple of classes. Um it was something that definitely um helped uh helped me visualize uh the more that we can get verse in in what the codes are, not only for the city, but for, you know, the state, for the county and overall. Um it's something that definitely, we're headed the right way and the commitment is there. So I'm happy to to say that. Um one little thing, and I want to be fast about it because I know we don't have that much time and I definitely want to um let everybody else um have questions if they 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 want to um have them. We attended various um of the um actually all of the uh events that the city has had. Uh a pleasure that we have every year is that we enjoy being part of it. The parade trunk um and tree Thanksgiving basket um distribution, the breakfast with Santa, the holiday basket. It's something that we enjoy throughout the years and um, you know, we'll keep being that part of that. Um one of the things that I definitely brought in um and I made um Emily my admin and myself join was um Wicked, um something that I um learned um when I was in I C C, which is Women in Code Enforcement and Development, which is something um nu- new for me, but I'm looking forward to actually learn a lot from those ladies. And the last thing is um, as you know, we are gonna be hosting, this is Z O A. Um that's the Code Enforcement and Zoning Officials Association um Spring Meeting in April. So we're looking forward to that. It's the first time that the city actually is um doing this. So um here's, you know, uh this moment you have in the screen, actually, um I just wanted to bring that up to um the two inspectors and the great job that they're doing. Um the new inspection report that they have created, um Inspector Leddo actually created Q R cards for all the codes, the different codes for I C C, for the county and also for us. So this is something that we're sending out now, um you know, for inspection reports and also for notice of violation. So now um the residents have the chance to actually look at the information without having to like struggle to get that. So um this is called now. Any questions that you have?
Thank you so much, Alma. And have you shared the news of the new uh title that you just received? Can you please share with the community what it is?
So actually, unfortunately, Mayor, I just received the news um the other day that they um are no longer having committing um members from um I guess the municipalities. They're doing only um, I guess, what they have in place right now. But I'll make sure to definitely get into something else. So don't worry about that.
So we'll add you in April. Uh I'll talk to the team, okay? So we're working on it. But thank you so much because I think for the residents to be aware, like hosting, you know, that very selective of like esteemed group of people to City Marinier also mean they get to see our city. Also means that our cities recognize a place for them to come. So all the efforts you guys are doing are it's a lot, but we're definitely happy. Um it is it's moving along because you've been here as long as me and Luca have been and it was a lot of work in that department. I think that we think maybe one occasion we held, two inspectors and everything else has been one here, one there. So it's it it is a lot. So thank you for that. So I'm gonna go open the mic if you guys have any questions. If you guys are just wanna say congratulations, make it make it effective and quick and loving, okay? All right, go ahead, Chesek.
Um I I can't be too quick because I'm just so proud of the work you've been doing with code. Um I think it's really smart to bring in somebody with customer service and I T background. Um I just think that's great. Um and looking at this, this, the way that the the code looks here with the Q R codes, that's just so smart and will help our residents. Um and all the classes you took and get involved with the Women's in Code Enforcement. Um I just am really proud of you. Um you know, some people get into a leadership role and they kind of are pleased with what they have, but you keep growing um in that role and just super proud of you and happy that you're here. Way to go.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're like, yeah. All right, uh uh Danielle?
Thank you. Um thank you so much, Alma, for all you have done and continue to do for the city. Um I am truly impressed with all the classes you have taken as as someone who's a certification collector myself um that you've earned and congratulations on that. And it has been a pleasure working with you and learning the things with the uh Design Review Board. So thank you for your guidance on that as well. Now, I I I I've read through all of the reports. So I've put together questions because you guys have put through all this this effort in the reports. I want to, you know, give you a chance to speak on some of the information that I may have a question or somebody in the community might have a question about. Um I do want to say that I'm also impressed with all, I I put this in my notes here, that um I am impressed that your department has participated in all the volunteer work you've done with the city this past year with all the events, and I appreciate that. Um and as you know, I'm a huge proponent of volunteers, and so your efforts are not unrecognized by me at the very least. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Now, I do have a question. Um some of I have some that I can, we can email um or have a meeting another time, but I have a big one I'd like to discuss here in the meeting, and that is the vacant registrations on pages nine and twelve of your report. Um are these residential and or business vacancies?
Yes, they are. They're both um residential. And yes, in the um in the report that we do um every year, we um put in there exactly if it's a residential or a commercial. But yes, um um.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Um I noticed on here that it has a zero for vacant registrations. Now, this is, you know, I'm still learning some of these things, but I do know that there is a fee that are fine that vacant businesses have to have to pay. And the fact that there's zero quantity on that kind of concerns me because just driving from D C into Mount Rainier, I can count three vacant businesses have been there for a long time. So if you could at least it it, you know, let me know, educate me and maybe some of the residents who are watching this live or replay, what the deal is on that and how we are collecting or not collecting and why, if you could.
Okay, so the way that we the way that we collect um the vacant um fees are, we collect them twice a year for residential. Um and that's January through June and July through December. Um for lots, for vacant lots, we only um do it once a year and for commercial, we only do it once a year. So if if the vacant registration comes in during those those dates, um before, you know, um say October, November, December, that's why you don't see some amounts in there.
So, okay, so essentially it just wasn't that time of year for these to come in.
Correct.
Awesome. Thank you so much for explaining that to me, Alma. And again, thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right, so uh, thank you, Alma. To your team. I know it's a lot of effort. The fact that you guys are doing a hundred percent of the apartments is a lot of work along with the businesses. I know you went back and you know, reviewed some of the files and we're working on making sure everybody gets in compliance. Because at the end of the day, like, you know, want to make sure we are responsible. Um other than that, thank you for answering the question uh when it comes to on it. Valerie, I missed you, so I I'll cut in and then I'll go to you, okay? Yes, perfect. Um so thank you for the stick reports and um I will say to you, um, we all read them, we all reviewed them. I know Mr. Kamali is very detail oriented in it. You guys have meetings as well. I know the rest of us do and if we have a question, we'll chat to Mr. Kamali on it. So definitely great effort from all of us, making sure we follow through and having you guys there, like, you know, same thing I told P D, right? Um it's good to see you guys there so that way like the the residents get to meet you guys and also if I have questions, you guys are very approachable. And not just when you need to do an expansion or knock on the door. They already seen you before in a friendlier setting. So thank you for putting your whole entire team out there and they're so they're so wonderful and um I'm getting very positive reviews also from other municipalities around, you know, as as they being engaging as well. So thank you for that. Valerie, go on. I'm so sorry, Valerie. It's a long day.
No worries. Um um Melissa, if you can scroll the next slide down, um number sixteen. I love this spreadsheet right here, um including this in your report. Um I want to echo what Luke and and Mayor and Danielle all said about, you know, the work that you've been doing. I think this is a great um snapshot of when the funds come in, you know, when the um um things are collected, the revenue trends by month. Um so thank you for providing that because I think that shows a a fuller picture of all the all all the funds that are coming in. Um one thing I just wanted to quickly ask was, uh are we generally on track in terms of budget versus um revenue? Like, are we what we budgeted for? Is that what we're getting? Is it close or are we far off or um that was my only question?
It it really kind of varies, um to tell you the truth, when it comes to numbers, um definitely. Um but I think the 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 every year that go we go by, um we get to implement like different ways of actually knowing what exactly comes in. So um we get to know the the numbers, I guess, uh the real numbers better. And this actually, I created this just for that because I wanted to make sure that every month and every um at the end of the year, I knew exactly what was coming in.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted.
I am so sorry. This is what happens, right? Uh Jared's in. Uh Jared, do you want to say something? So we got two more minutes?
Uh not at this time and apologies for travel snafu, so.
You're 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 fine. I I learned then that you have alerted me that you were coming in a little bit late. All right, Alma, thank you so much. And if you don't have a property on, we'll let you go because I know you guys also work late hours and you spend quite a bit of time with us in these meetings. Bye, Alma. Thank you to the whole team as well.
Have a good.
Good night. All right, moving on to next item. We have Presentation, Discussion and Economic Development Department. These are all the second quarters. So just as a point of information, we have Director Ronald Hopkins uh with us. Hello, Ronald Hopkins?
Uh good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. So should I just begin?
The floor is yours.
Okay, um can you scroll up a little bit, Melissa, so you can see the pictures for and so a little more, a little more, a little more. Right there, that's good. So as um everyone is well aware, the Wayfinding Signs Project is complete. Um this was a before, uh this was an actual uh image created of where the signs would be located, but now they're actually located in those specific positions located strategically along Rhode Island Avenue. So that has been completed. Uh I just want to uh let everyone know that we completed this project two years in advance. So it wasn't due to actually two thousand twenty-five and we completed in two thousand twenty-three. So that really looks good on our part as far as project complete completion is concerned in regards to D H C D and our uh access to funding opportunities. Um next page, Melissa. All right, so uh we finally got the contract signed from Hoptee Haas and our attorney. And the Thirty-Four Street Facade Improvement Project is moving forward. Uh the property owners have met with the property and business owners have met with the design team and they're going off on they're creating different designs, awnings and things like that as well. So once we get that design package back, then we can issue R F P for that actual implementation phase of this project and then begin the phase two of the lo- um Thirty-Four Street project down the street. So that's pretty much moving according to schedule. Uh with thirty-two hundred Rhode Island Avenue. So um according to the city manager, we haven't heard anything from the developer uh and the owner of that property. I think uh emails were sent out, but we haven't haven't heard any response. Um happy to announce that we received seventy-five thousand dollars for the Thirty-Four Street Facade Improvement Project, which is includes tangies, hands-on barbers, and that lower portion of thirty-two hundred um Thirty-Fourth Street uh Thirty-Fourth Street, okay? And then, let's see. Participated in the Mayor Benitez, like the elected officials tour with Jared, Valerie, city manager, that uh we went a tour at Pennyroy Station and the Media Arts Lab. I've also facilitated the F S E First. They had a national C D F I conference in Washington, D C. And we had we had a luncheon at Pennyroy Station and I actually facilitated that as well. Um participated in the Economic Development Capstone Case Study. Also attended uh Prince George's Economic Development Council's Gala Event. Uh uh produced and attended the Maryland Black Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting and Awards Banquet. Attended the monthly municipalities Cooperative for Economic Development Meeting with the all the economic development directors in Prince George's County, and this is hosted by Prince George's Economic Development uh Corporation. And then also, oh, attended a F S E First Speed Networking Event at uh with F S E First. So that's pretty much a summation of my activities from October to December of two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Any questions?
Thank you, Ron. And you also belong to what board?
What board?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the Maryland Black Chamber of Commerce, yes.
That you are ridiculously very active with. So I'll pass it out to the council, but thank you so much for all those grants that you have worked written, follow up and help implement as well. We're definitely very grateful for your efforts. All right, Council, I'm gonna open up the floor. We'll go around. All right, uh Chesek, actually, no, we're gonna go Valerie because I skipped you, Valerie. This is my way of saying, oops, sorry. All right, Valerie, go.
Um thank you. Uh and thank you, uh Mr. Hopkins, for this report. Um I am concerned about the thirty-two hundred um uh block of Rhode Island Avenue, um because I think it's it is something that you know, we have to figure out a way to solve that uh challenge. Um and so I'm hoping, I I don't know if you have any other um ideas or thoughts, that that's the only thing. I mean, I think other than that, I think everything that you've been doing has been really, really great for the city. Um I love the signage. I love the um grant awards and the facade improvements that have happened already, um but I am concerned about the thirty-two hundred um block of Rhode Island Avenue. Maybe you can speak to that and see if there's anything, you know, we can be doing to to address that.
So you're gonna have to ask the city manager about that because um I was taken off the correspondence between the developer, property owner and myself. So that's left to the city manager so he can answer all those questions with regard to thirty-two hundred Rhode Island Avenue.
Okay.
Mister?
Okay, I can give you some information, Valerie.
Yeah.
So right now, we are just going by the city's code as a vacant. We are recognizing that place as a vacant. And we're reporting to the uh P G County Finance Department, which we're gonna hold him accountable for two point for his entire property as a vacant since two thousand twenty-two. That was the three years exemption that was given to him. And we have tried to have a meeting with him. Unfortunately, he's not responding. The only leverage that we have, just, you know, go by the vacant tax. This is a close to thirty-three thousand square feet. So if you multiply by two point five, it's gonna be a big, big chunk of money. That's the only thing that we can do because he's not cooperating with the city. Six or eight months ago, he said he's working on his, you know, permit. I haven't seen anything. I'm working with Alma very closely and with the D P I to make sure that we're gonna hold him accountable because he's not responding. And there is nothing else I can do in this regard.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. Anything else? Valerie, did I answer your question? More or less?
Yes.
Okay. Um as a point of clarity, the three years he's talking about is the three years um Grace Pier, we give the businesses before they are put into the vacant list. So he'll be added to this year's vacant list. Um Alma, they they talked about when the new deadlines are coming in to have the people in the list. So that's, you'll see it in the next quarterly report, quarter three. All right, so Jared, I'll give you the floor. You're matching with your wild Jared.
Yep, yeah, I know. So camouflage. Yep, yeah, I know. So camouflage. Um, but thank you so much, Ron, for all the work you're doing for the city. I, the, um, Wayfinding Signs, uh, look fantastic. I'm really excited by those. I really appreciate, you know, I know we had some challenges because SHA wouldn't let us, uh, put them in the middle, but, um, of, of the, um, in the median, but I think actually the location where they are works just great as well. Uh, again, wanted to commend you on your work for, um, facade improvement on Thirty Fourth Street. It's a really big win, um, brings in resources that we desperately, desperately need. And so thank you for, thank you for that lift. Uh, every dollar that we bring in from the state or federal sources, uh, means more projects that we can do uh, without having to kind of tap into the resources of our existing community. So, um, and thanks to, you know, again, Ron and, and, um, Mr. Kamali, you know, just directionally for your work on Rhode Island Avenue. I know the Thirty-two hundred property is, um, you know, it's again, not the cities, you know, the city has indirect control over it. There are certain tools we can have. I appreciate your, um, the city staffs continue to work on this, uh, topic as we, you know, as we try to get some movement. Um, you know, in a, in a, you know, more challenging economic development and borrowing environment than it has been in the past. I know there's a lot of factors. Some within developers' control, the owners' control and some outside. But I appreciate the steps that, uh, our city staff is taking in this area. So, uh, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Jared, Daniel and Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Mr. Hopkins, very much for this report. I want you to know that I have seen the Wayfinder signs and even got a picture for, uh, my newsletter to show them off. So thank you so much for those. I am grateful for the grants that you are applying for and helping boosting the aesthetics of our business district here in the city. As you might recall from the meeting we had when I was first elected, boosting our businesses in the city is a huge priority for me. So any effort you give towards helping make Mount Rainier place businesses want to make their home makes me quite appreciative. So again, thank you very much. Um, Valerie, um, beat me to the punch as far as Thirty-two hundred is concerned, and then Jared doubled back on it as well. However, I have a question. Listening to, um, what you were saying and, and the conversation and what, uh, Mayor said, um, uh, first of all, I'm confused why you're not communicating with the business owner being the Director of, uh, Economic Development, but be that as it may, um, maybe we need to, uh, consider increasing the, uh, vacant lot fee um, or vacant business fee, um, you know, um, two, what is it? Two dollars and fifty cents per one hundred dollar assessor, square foot or whatever? Maybe we need to choke it up a little bit and put some pressure on him to, uh, consider differently, um. Because I, 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 I'll be honest with you, it, I hate driving into the city from DC and on Eastern Avenue. When we came into town coming home from North Carolina the other night, I, I mean, all we saw was that black tarp and it was just waving in the wind and you could see all the, all the storage and stuff right there. I mean, it's an embarrassment. And we really need to find a way that we can choke this guy down to get him to either make a move or sell the property, something. And I know I'm not alone on this because I heard from residents. I get, I, I, whenever I see people out, they're like, what is going on with this? Why can't we have the dog park back? Um, um, I do appreciate everything you're doing. Um, I hope that between you and the city manager, somebody can get in touch with him and get something moving, or I would urge my colleagues on the council that we need to consider, um, increasing that fine and, uh, putting the heat on him to make him either make a move or like they say, you know, um, make a move or get out of the kitchen. So, thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins. I appreciate it.
So a reminder of the rules of the court, if you have a suggestion when it comes to our city manager regarding their stop, send an email directly to the city manager. This is not to be brought up in that meeting. So I want to make sure that is clear. Thank you guys so much. Mr. Kamali, do you have something to add? If not, I'm passing out to Luke Chesek.
No, I appreciate Mayor. Uh, I was gonna say the same thing, but when it comes to the rate for the vacant, we cannot just increase the rate for one person and the city is doing, you know, what we can do and Mr. Hopkins is not being, uh, eliminated from that process. He is part of that team and I'm running the team. And I do appreciate if there is any question, you can reach out to me, Daniel. And I will be glad to respond to you. We have done as much as we could do in our leverage, so the owner is not responding. Put yourself in my position. When somebody is not responding, I cannot go and force somebody to come and do something. The only thing that we can do to implement the vacant tax, which is two point five dollars per square foot, which has been approved by Mayor and Council. You're welcome to talk to your colleague and see what we can do about this very unforeseen situation. So if you have any question, I'll be glad to respond to your email and request tomorrow morning. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. Um, my, my, I was not, please.
Guys, no, 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 time, time. Nope, 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 nope. We're not doing this. Please make sure, good, shut the mic down, please. You need to, we have to apply by the rules of the court. The comment was made, it was addressed, we move on to Luke Chesek. He has the floor. I need to make sure we follow the rules of the court. Luke has not spoken and neither have I. So we need to make sure we're respectful. Go ahead, Luke. The floor is yours.
Um, I would just say, uh, Ron, thanks for the presentation. Uh, obviously getting the wayfinding done ahead of schedule is great. Um, and the grants for the facade improvements. I'll put that one just reminder on the facade improvements with the bay windows and kind of removing the awnings. Um, I think that would just do really, really great for the, for the facade improvements on Thirty Fourth Street. Um, and if, you know, getting, uh, really, really beautiful facade improvements, um, uh, it might, might cost more than the grant money that we have. You know, I'm totally willing to hear out, you know, if there's a need for, for the city to kind of, um, uh, uh, help with that funding and all. Um, I do want to ask one question. Um, what are your plans for like the coming year with, with respect to and kind of your thoughts on where you see opportunities for further economic development in, in our downtown?
Um, there are a lot of opportunities, but first let me address the facade improvement on Thirty Fourth Street. Um, so your recommendation has been duly noted to the business owners. However, they're in conversations with the design team and they're going along with their preferences as well. So I just want you to make sure that you're aware of that. As far as other, uh, plans for economic development within the city, um, I plan to apply for another facade improvement grant, um, on Rhode Island Avenue to cover uh, Dodas Kitchen, um, Dana's Hair Salon, Chuck's Liquors and across the street Heather Ware's um, new parking lot. So we wanted to finish that portion of Rhode Island Avenue. And then we're gonna go over to Barnum Street and then have a facade improvement project on the Barnum Street area as well. That's just for the facade improvement. And I think that gives us a big.
Do you mind if I interrupt you for a second? I'm gonna ask for more time because time ran out. In the respective time, can I have four more minutes on the clock, guys?
Second.
Okay, so probably move a second in discussion. Objection, attention here, none. Four minutes have been allocated. Sorry, Ron, I just want to make sure I keep up with the time. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
So, yeah, so the, to get the biggest bang for the buck is the facade improvements. We get a lot of money for that and most residents are like, they like the visual appeal. It shows change taking place downtown in Mount Rainier as well. So that's where my area focuses currently. There's also, we're looking at the Capstone project that was recently completed by George Washington students as well. So I'm following those recommendations. And also we're trying to bring my, my primary objective is to grow, expand, attract and retain businesses to the area. So that's what I'm doing. So that's what I look as far as economic development is being concerned. That's my number one priority for the city.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you so much, Ron, for all the, for the work you do. I think that sometimes it goes unnoticed, um, that the recent, one of the main reasons that we have been able to, we have been allowed to reduce taxes, but also keep them and not go up has been because we have a team that goes out there and is very, um, very effective at getting grants. Because the reality is like, if you put all the grants that, you know, you get, Chief gets, you know, like the city gets and so on and so on and so on. It's bordering like, you know, thousands and even now millions of dollars that we bring into the city, um, in order to make it happen. The other thing that I want to commend you on it is how good you are when it comes to like communicating with the business owners and the building owners because, um, they're not the same person. And sometimes there's like mixed interest between who owns the building, who runs the building. She had done a beautiful job at maneuvering the relationship between us and sticking very true to winning through collaboration. The other thing is like, uh, statewide, I know I've been to various conferences with you, um, and you're very well recognized for the work that, that you do, not just for our city, but also for the area, including, um, your involvement in mentoring, uh, youth and the next generation of, um, economic development, um, young consultants. I would not call them kids, young consultants. I age myself very much when I do that. Um, young consultants, so that's also very, um, very precise for you to do. Um, regarding, um, what it looks like, yeah, I know your plan since day one has been very much like, you know, tackled every section of the business area for the city. The other thing that thanks to your great efforts, we have an affiliate, uh, Main Street. As a city in Mount Rainier that has opened up for us to be able to apply to various, uh, grants. And that, um, has helped us out a lot. Okay? So in the meantime, we'll continue to communicate for the next plans that are coming and deadlines and um, and it's gotten to the positive point that I also see whenever, um, we meet other elected officials, like, you know, from the Moore Miller administration, that I recognize also, uh, the work that you're doing in the city. So thank you for that. Um, as I mentioned to some of you guys, you know, I do spend a lot of time, uh, working in behalf of the city. But it's great to see, um, our teams out there working and representing as well because I cannot be in every single place, but, uh, we're highly represented at all levels. Okay?
So I want to say something really quickly. Um, I saw Afilia, Afilia has a, a message in the chat about the new restaurant that's coming next to Arrow Wine Bar and Pennyroyal Station.
Go ahead. I was gonna read it, but go ahead.
All right, so I wanted to address that. So that's, um, the name of that business is Randy's Fire and Ice. They are going through the permitting process right now and they should be open hopefully by the end of April. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, Afilia.
All right, Afilia, thank you so much and thank you for covering that one, uh, Ron. All right.
Okay. All right.
Where are we with time, um, Millie?
We just have a few, like thirty seconds, so.
We're not, yeah, thirty. Um, I'm done. Okay, so Mr. Hopkins, continue doing the great work that you're doing. The signs look wonderful and it's good for people to know that they're in the city in Mount Rainier where they're driving on Route One. Both directions. All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, shut my mic up. Moving on to the next item, presentation discussion, the police department. Second quarter, I know, second quarter. And you know what? I might end up just having all three of you guys to do your reports next time and then we'll ask you guys collective questions at the end. The mayor and council receive a presentation from Chief Alston, our Chief of Police. Hello, Chief, how are you? Another person that I see, um, working hard in Annapolis as well, uh, testimonies and everything. Go on. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council, City Manager and members of the community. Thank you for having me this evening. Uh, my report is pretty lengthy, so I'm just gonna cover highlights of, if, at any time, if, if I'm going too fast for, for you, please let me know and I'll slow down and I'm here to answer any questions you may have as well. Uh, first up, you see our, what we call Part One offenses for the quarter of October one to, uh, December thirty-one. Uh, we had a total, uh, you see, we still had a rise in auto thefts and property crimes. That's been our our, uh, our norm recently in the region. Uh, we had a total of, um, thirty-three arrests this quarter, uh, and I'm ready for the next page, Melissa. Uh, on October twenty-seventh, we welcomed a new officer who graduated from Prince George's County Community, uh, Police, Police Academy. That's Officer, uh, Lando Jones. Uh, we also had our trunk or treat uh, at, uh, our second annual trunk or treat at the Nature Center. That was, uh, a great turnout along with our Halloween, uh, parade, uh, that the city put on. And no, on November tenth, uh, the city had our, our Mount Rainier, uh, welcomed, uh, our veterans there for Veterans Day Breakfast. Uh, we also hosted in November, on the twenty-fifth, uh, a lunch for, or dinner for our explorers. On December third, we heard, we had our second annual, uh, shot with a cop and we were supported by uh, quite a few of our local police departments. December twenty-first, we had our very first, uh, joint traffic operation with the Metropolitan Police Department and the Prince George's County Police Department. Pretty much that centered on the area of Eastern Avenue, uh, that corridor. We also, uh, had a DUI enforcement on New Year's Eve. Uh, we actually arrested one driver through DUI right out, out front of the police station. Our police explorers, they've been pretty active this quarter. Uh, they had a pumpkin carving in October. Uh, they also helped with the trunk or treat and they helped, uh, wrap gifts for the, uh, shot with a cop. The police explorers participated in the food drive at FedEx Field. They also helped on December thirteenth and sixteen, uh, with the Prince George's County's, uh, uh, Explorers Program Toys for Tots Institute. The explorers also helped preparing holiday baskets for our holiday food drive. Next, we'll have our social service coordinator report. Uh, our social service coordinator's been pretty busy. Uh, she, uh, assisted with the, uh, Holloway, Halloween Parade and Trunk or Treat. Uh, she also assisted with, um, arranging for, for a closed closet, a, and a Daydream Sunshine Initiative, which involves HIV testing. She also helped set up and arrange for participants for the trunk or treat at the Mount Rainier, uh, Nature Center. You'll see here, she's put in her community, uh, outreach, uh, stats as well. Uh, some of the week, weekly check-ins she's had, some of the donations, the, uh, energy assistance and rental assistance, uh, passport and immigration help, job hunting and translation. So she would put her stats in for each of the months. In November, uh, she attended our, uh, gala and I'll talk more about that later in my report as well. Uh, in November, she helped with the annual Thanksgiving baskets. Uh, the end of November, she was featured on WTOP for, uh, for upcoming event for World Aid, which, uh, featured, um, our collaboration with the Daydream Sunshine Initiative, which is the HIV testing uh, in, in local communities. Uh, Social Services also held a code drive in the month of November. And that'll go until the end of February and the beginning of March. December, uh, was, uh, one of her initiatives, the Daydream Sunshine Initiative, which was the World Aid event I spoke of, which was on WTOP, where they tested, uh, for HIV, offered testing for HIV and HVC. The Social Services Coordinator also presented to community members every Friday in December at the Nature Center, uh, holiday movie nights. These police explorers also helped with that event. In October, uh, in December, Social Services attended the Prince George's County Community Partnership Meeting hosted by host, the, uh, Mount Rainier Nature Center. Uh, in December, our Social Services Coordinator and Ronald Hopkins, our Economic Development Director, took a walk to local businesses and formally introduced her, uh, to the owners. She translated for them in Spanish for the Spanish business owners who had safety concerns to share with Ron Hopkins. On December eighth, our Social Services Coordinator, uh, helped with the Breakfast with Santa hosted by the city of Mount Rainier. Uh, December twenty-first, uh, she helped with, uh, the holiday distribution basket on Christmas time. Delivery of food to Mount Rainier one and two, uh, with Mayor Benitez. And on December twenty-second, the Social Services Committee Director, uh, Social Services Coordinator went around the businesses trying to collect funds, uh, to turn, to help turn on the electricity for elder community members. to help turn on the electricity for elder community member. On the twenty-third of December, the social service coordinator and the Rock Christian Church held a food distribution from our community room. The police explorers al- also helped, uh, to hand out and organize the distribution to our community members. And then you also see, uh, more of her stats for the month of December. So that ends her, uh, report for social services. We'll go quickly through our criminal investigation division. Um, that's pretty much that chart is showing, uh, our, our crimes, uh, part one offenses that you saw on the very first page I presented. It's just a graph put together by our, uh, criminal investigative team. Uh, in December, we had a, uh, armed robbery of our Dollar General store. Uh, and we were actively investigating that case as well. We have some, uh, new leads on that. You may remember we had a contact shooting and, uh, armed carjacking, uh, back in November. Uh, we recently, uh, were waiting for some, uh, more evidence. We may have a suspect in that case as well. Unfortunately, in October, uh, we had a juvenile come into our city and actually shoot a family member. We made an arrest in an incident that occurred, that occurred in October where we had an individual who had fired shots in Brentwood and then continued into our city of foreign shots. So, uh, that individual, uh, has been arrested. We had a joint, uh, search warrant, uh, drug related with the Metropolitan Police Department in DC, uh, and our, uh, Project Safe Neighborhoods, uh, Task Force. We had a juvenile arrest, uh, and this was a gun arrest, uh, uh, in Queenstown and Buchanan Streets. In December, uh, Detective Ruffin attended the Violent Crime Reduction Summit in Indianapolis, Indiana. The, uh, Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy actually, uh, invited us there and, uh, paid for his trip, his flight, his hotel accommodations and all. So we were very thankful for that relationship. We had another juvenile arrest, uh, twenty-ninth and Upsher for a non-contact shooting. Uh, we had a juvenile arrest and for stolen vehicle that was recovered as well. We had, uh, an adult that was arrested in a gun arrest, uh, back in November, November twelfth. That ends our CID report. Um, I want to thank everyone who was able to make it out, uh, to support us for our centennial anniversary gala for the, for the Mount Rainier Police Department. It was an incredible event. Uh, we appreciate having so many of our community, uh, partners there as well, political and law enforcement, uh, actually chiefs around the region are still, uh, giving us accolades for, for such a wonderful event. And you'll see on this page, uh, our speed camera totals. Uh, we issued this quarter eleven thousand fifty-one citations. Uh, the vendor collected a total of two hundred and forty-four thousand eight twenty-five. You'll see in our column how much actually was wired to the city of, from those collections or from those, uh, citations collected. Uh, down below, you'll see, uh, our, we also have a collection agency that collects as well on past due, uh, speed camera citations. And most recently, they've added past due parking citations as well. For our police department grants, uh, we received the, uh, and still working off of the grant to, uh, support police operations, which is called a SAP grant, State Aid for Police Protection. This year we were awarded two hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Uh, the bond bill we received for the basement, uh, just to let you know where we are now with that. Uh, we've narrowed down to one vendor. Um, and I know the city manager has presented that to mayor and council for, for review. So hopefully soon we'll be able to start work on, on that basement project. Uh, also you see, uh, I wrote a grant for the, uh, Police Accountability and Community Transparency Grant. We received, uh, five, fifty-eight thousand, uh, a hundred and nine dollars for that. That's for the purchase of body worn camera software, uh, a, a mass notifications, uh, system for the city. And, um, these grants are all reimbursable. Uh, we have Project Safe Neighborhoods grants still ongoing, which, uh, help to support overtime for police initiatives, uh, community engagement, uh, the installation of, uh, citywide camera systems. So we're still working on getting that finalized, uh, to get those cameras installed. Uh, we also received thirty thousand dollars from the BJAG grant, which is, uh, federal money that's filtered through the governor's office, uh, to assist in our purchase of, of our new laptop computers. Uh, and the last award we have is our two thousand FY twenty-four Police Retention and Recruitment Grant. Uh, we were awarded fifteen thousand dollars for that grant. And that pretty much ends my report and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Hopefully, hopefully I didn't go too quickly.
No, chief, it's okay. You are, um, under various, uh, under various departments or under the police umbrella. So we have two minutes, council. Make it quick or add more time. Okay? If not, go meet you and move on. All right? So Luke.
I'll, I'll be quick. Just thank you, chief, for everything you and the staff does, um, keeping us safe. Uh, people don't see often what you guys are doing, um, and it just really is, uh, paramount to people, um, being able to live their lives. Um, safety is the number one thing in that hierarchy and Pavlov's hierarchy and you guys provide that for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. Valerie?
Um, thank you. Um, I will also be quick. I, um, just one thing. I didn't see that you, um, noted that you had been there on the recreation committee's, um, uh, sweaty sweater run.
Oh, yeah.
You guys provided a lot of support to that and I want to thank you and the police explorers for being there and, and participating in that as well. Um, I only had one quick question. Um, can you just describe the basement project so people can remember what that is about really quick?
Uh, sure. Uh, that's a, a total renovation of, of our basement. Um, it's gonna, the resulting, uh, project will be a, a, a workout center uh, for our officers, for wellness, uh, actually for our city employees as well, uh, for some of our community partners. Uh, it'll be, uh, restrooms down there as well, uh, showers. Uh, it's gonna have a office area as well and, and then the uh, breakout will be also for a s- a simulator. I don't know if you've been over and seen that years ago, uh, we actually purchased the shooting, uh, simulator that we use for training. So we'll also be able to use, use that for training as well. It's the judgmental shoot and shoot, don't shoot scenarios.
Good. It's hard. I tried it. Definitely hard. All right. Uh, Danielle and then, uh, Jared, right? I got all of you. Go ahead.
Um, it looks like time's up. Can, uh, we put some more time on the, uh, clock, mayor?
Melissa, can you, uh, can I get a motion on the floor for four, um, six more minutes? Or maybe five, five minutes? All right. Probably move and second, any discussion? Objection, extension here. Now in five more minutes on the clock. Thank you, Meli. Sorry.
Thank you, mayor. Um, and thank you, chief. Um, I want to, uh, thank you and, uh, for everything that you've done and all the work and the gala was great. It was fantastic. But I also want to thank, um, Officer Cruz for all the work, uh, that he has done and continues to do with the explorers. I know that the CERT specifically is very pleased to have him as a part of their liaison team. So you guys are doing a great job with them as somebody who was a junior explorer back in the day with, uh, paramedicine or the, um, emergency squad. I, I really, I really admire the work you're doing with them and I'm proud of that. Um, I do have a question for you. Actually, I didn't have the social service coordinator, um, her report in my packet. So I, I was gonna ask you, what has she done? Are you guys proud of her? But thank you for doing that presentation. I'm very proud of her and, um, I can tell she's done a lot of really good for our community. Um, so I will, uh, my second, I'll just make it my main question. Um, it's on the crossing guard situation with the schools. Uh, can you let us know what, if anything, the department is able to do to assist the schools and what, if anything, is being done by the county? In other words, can you like bring us up to speed on what's going on right now? Um, with what our police support, uh, department is doing to help with the crossing guard situation? And what, if anything, you've heard back from the, uh, from the county as far as, um, you know, being able to hire in our city on our own or start a volunteer corps? Like I've said in the past, I'm just curious where we're at with that. Otherwise, um, chief, thank you so much.
Sure, sure. Um, we have no final resolution at this time with, uh, what we can do with the county. Uh, as I may have mentioned in one of our meetings, I did bring it up with the county, uh, Assistant Chief as well. And they said that they would be willing to offer training, but still they're in the process from what I'm hearing from Chief Aziz, uh, of hiring more crossing guards. Uh, one of the things that we know is that crossing guards have a union and so the ideal situation would be to hire people right from our community. But they have a, 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 a union that where they could be put anywhere. So they may be hired from Mount Rainier and end up in Evanston or somewhere else in, uh, Prince George's County. So, uh, what we're actually doing now is help assisting as we can, uh, with, uh, Mount Rainier Elementary School. Uh, just spoke with the, uh, newly, uh, promoted chief of Brentwood and he's gonna do more to help with Brentwood as well, even with the traffic control around and, uh, the way the traffic flows. So we'll have further meetings on that, but I, I'm gonna have to get back with you and get, uh, better resolution from the county, uh, as to if they're willing to, uh, allow us to hire and, and reimburse our city. Because clearly that would be a MOU and money and all. So.
Thank you very much, chief. And yeah, you're right. Um, and, and it would be easier for us to hire people in city because like I, I would love to be a crossing guard, but I don't want to get shipped over to Laurel. I'd rather be right here in Mount Rainier. So thank you very much, chief, for everything.
Luke, go ahead.
I'm good. I already spoke, mayor.
Oh, sorry, Jared. There you blended in so much with you while I can see you.
No, no, no worries. Uh, no, thanks, chief, for all the work you're doing. I'm glad we've, you know, I know we've had some ups and downs, um, in terms of crime and, uh, and I'm glad that, you know, your, your, your staff's work is really, and, and presence has really helped, um, I think, address a lot of the, uh, uh, of the recent uptick. So your, your work and your staff's work, um, you know, around the clock is really, really appreciated. Um, I think, you know, most everyone else on the call already covered probably all my questions. So I just want to again, thank you and everyone on your team's, uh, you know, contribution to, to the city and engagement and, uh, keeping us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Um, as for me, I'll say the same thing I said earlier to Mr. Hopkins. You know, I say the same thing for you. The ability for you guys to be able to get so many grants and now you just get them, be able to execute them properly allows for us to be able to do so much. And that's what kept taxes, you know, from not rising. So we thank you so much for that because I know anything, there's even a thought of idea that we cross. You guys go out there to see if it's a grant and you guys have heavily been recognized when it comes to the governor's team. But also state and nationwide. So I, I do get a lot of feedback, uh, from our police department. So thank you, chief, for making sure you're putting us up there in high regards and, um, I definitely appreciate it because it's always like a good subject of conversation when it comes to other departments, but also, uh, the governor's team and so on. So please extend the thank you to your whole entire team. Uh, regarding the crosscar, I think the last thing, um, to add, it is not as easy as we can tell. They have to go through a background check through, um, the school system, like all of us volunteered because I had to go through a background check as well to be volunteered for the school. And the city cannot, uh, take the liability of, um, how do you call it? Doing the background check, being responsible for the background check. So we'll continue talking. I know me and you have talked about this and we continue advocating to both the county, the school board and so on, so that way they could potentially do some changes in order for us to do it. But, uh, yeah, the training uniforms and also background checks and, um, all the training that the crosscar requires has to go through them because we cannot do it, um, ourselves because that would make us liable, um, and that's definitely not a risk we can take. All right. And saying that, chief, thank you so much for your efforts, um, and also congratulations on making the Prince George's County Vice President, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So chief just became Vice President of the Prince George's County Chief Association, um, as well. They had this story in about last week, chief.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah. So when I said like he's representing us at those level, that's exactly what I mean. So congratulations, chief, for all your efforts and please extend the thank you to your team because you guys have been very good at solving cases and reacting, you know, extremely good as well. Then most of the time people don't realize everything that's happening until a report comes out, but you guys are very busy. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So, uh, council, it is eight twenty-three and we are number eight of the agenda. I'll let you guys know so that we can move, um, timely with the other items. Okay? Cause originally the clerk said we had about an hour forty and that's without any extension. You know, that was added as of right now. Okay? All right. Moving on to item number eight, public comment. Uh, see page four of the agenda. You put it up, Meli, uh, Melissa. Thank you. The mayor and council invite and welcome comments at public meeting. The mayor preside, the mayor will recognize you. Please introduce yourself, spell. You have to spell it last name, first name for recurring purposes, your street and block number. For example, forty-three hundred block of thirty-fourth street. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Otherwise, agree by us and weren't agreeing more, more than three minutes. While speaking, please maintain a courteous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about performance or conduct of city employee, please bring your concern to the city manager. You could reach him by email. Uh, citymanager@maraniermv.org. We will look into the matter, respond to you. As the courtesy to the residents and businesses, the council requests a speaker not use specific addresses of names of individuals when describing a situation or making a complaint, knowing the block prefer over a specific address. Uh, con compliance, public safety should first be read to attention appropriate department. Um, I know we need to edit this one. Should be brought up to the attention of city manager as well because city manager is the one that runs day to day, um, for us. And then he'll bring it to us if there's something he needs to bring to us. Okay? In saying that, I know Ophelia, you were like first on my deck. Um, I did, you did put, uh, congratulations, chief. Um, all right. So Oph- Ophelia, you changed your name as of like five seconds ago, right?
I actually know somebody must have changed it for me. I don't know if I changed.
So Ophelia, let us know, how do you call it? Your block and street number and your, the floor is yours.
Okay. I'm Ophelia Baxter, B-A-X-T-E-R. Uh, first name spelled O-P-H-E-L-I-A. I'm in the, um, forty-two hundred block of thirtieth street. Um, my, I have two items that I want to bring up and number one is the light, the street light. We have so many, and you know, uh, they're on, on other streets as well. But going from thirtieth street, if you go from my block all the way down to Around the Road and it's nighttime, man, a lot of people walk in the street because two reasons. A lot of neighbors don't keep their porch lights on, so the street is only lit by the street lights and some of them, a lot of them are out most of the time. If they're not totally out, they're flickering. Um, you know, going totally off and then like, you know, two minutes later they'll come back on and then they'll go totally off and then come back on. And I know you can report those lights and stuff like that to Pepco, but I just think the lights need to be brighter because the, and, and, and we need to encourage the residents to just turn on their porch lights and leave them on at night. It's, it, it's really, you know, pennies on your electric bill to do that. And it, it, it just maintains safety for everybody. And people in this neighborhood are always walking their dogs or just out getting exercise. And you know, it, it, you know, it's wet in the winter. It, it gets dark quicker and it's just a safety issue. And number two is the rodents in the city. Oh, Lord, can we do something about rodent abatement in the city? I mean, the, the, you know, on, on, on a global basis. Um, I, I know in the past we've tried to do something about that and I'm not sure, you know, kind of where it's gone. But I just, um, you know, wanted to see, you know, if the, the, the city has come up with a, a plan or something for the rodent abatement. And I know it's probably, you know, even though I, you know, I get mice in my house from, you know, outside, I'm sure that it's worse in the city where there are restaurants and stuff like that. And those type of dumpsters and the big apartment buildings and things like that, which I lived in Queenstown years, many years ago. And so I know. And so the, between the rodent abatement and the lights. And so the, between the rodent abatement and the lights, um, I think it's a safety issue. And I just kind of wanted to have someone from the city just follow up with me at some point about that and see what we can do.
Thank you, Ophelia. As for clarification, Ophelia, are you talking about the thirtieth block where you live where the lights are off or is it somewhere else that you're addressing?
I'm, I'm, I'm definitely talking about, you know, from, from my full block, from make, from the, the, the park down the street. If you go to the corner, I guess I shepherd all the way down to a rundle at nighttime. There are just parts of the street that are so dark that if someone was sitting there waiting on, you know, waiting to do you harm, you would never see them until they jumped out on you. So a lot of people, I've noticed that people at night, when they're walking their dogs, when they're strolling their kids and stuff, they're actually walking in the street. And that's a safety issue for them in the cars, you know? And so, you know, I mean, I try and be as vigilant as possible, but also I go out at night. Like I leave at ten thirty at night, every night to go pick up my daughter from work and we come back, it's about eleven thirty. And not to say that, you know, I've got to, I, I fear for my life because I don't. But I'm just saying that, you know, with the number of carjackings going up everywhere, with the number of personal assaults going up everywhere, you know, that not just Mount Rainier, but DC and everywhere else. You just try and keep your head on a swivel and make sure you're aware of your surroundings and getting the lights brighter would help with that.
Perfect. So Ophelia, Mr. Kamali is taking notes. I see him. So he'll follow up with you if you could, um, Mr. Kamali CC uh, council member Woodrow and Stoffes since it's their district, it will also help with the follow up. And uh regarding the businesses, Ophelia, and I'll cut it at that, right? This is the reason why Code is doing like extra work when it comes to like inspecting the apartments and everything else in the businesses to make sure they also tackle the problem. So that problem is like they're working on that end as well. Okay?
Okay.
So, but we'll continue keeping a lookout because if we could like, you know, stop some of that, it definitely will help. Mr. Kamali, I see your hand raised. Is there something you need to add? Mr. Kamali, up, down, in the middle? You're muted, Mr. Kamali.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. I just wanna say, Ophelia, thank you. Well, what we can do, I'm gonna have Pink, the communication person, to put the link for the outage with Pepco. And I do appreciate residents to just, you know, use the link and report the outage on their blocks because it's, it's very hard for my team to go and, you know, find out which light is out.
Absolutely.
Appreciate, I do appreciate your attention. And regarding the rodent, as mayor said, we are working on it and I will have Alma to be in touch with you. And again, thank you so much for bringing this one to our attention again, even though we're on it.
Okay, very good. And, and I don't know if Pepco can do anything to brighten up the lights. You know that apartment building right down there on a rundle road, right at a rundle with thirtieth street? They put in some new lights. I don't know if it was their doing or Pepco was doing. They put in some new lights that all of a sudden made it much brighter and much safer to like just have the residents walk on the street. And so I don't know if we could do something like that throughout the city too. I mean, not all at once. Don't, I know that's expensive, so you know.
No, let me let you know that.
Do you want us to, to increase, Ophelia?
Yes.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right now, right now, we're working with Pepco. Rosie and I working with Pepco and we're planning to do the street lights using the LED, which is gonna, which is gonna help us a lot and just be patient. LED is coming to be used as a street lights. I guarantee you, we're gonna have it fixed. Don't worry.
Fantastic. Thank you all for being so responsive.
Thank you.
Thank you so much and you're welcome to stay. Uh, you could stay as late as you want, Ophelia.
I know, but you know, I need to go cook now.
All right, we'll miss you, Ophelia. Thank you so much for coming and for, for your feedback and for being such a great community volunteer for many, many years. I appreciate you for that. We all do.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Good night, Ophelia. Um, anybody else that wishes to speak in the chat? Let us know. Nothing, nothing on Facebook, Jared? All right. So moving on to the next agenda item. Where are we? Oops. Oh my goodness, there you go. Um, ARPA discussion update number thirty-five. I know, guys, this is wrapping up very quickly. I can't believe it's thirty twenty-four. Before we know it, I could still see us getting to number fifty with this thing. All right, the mayor council discussed the status of the projects. Uh, Luke? Uh, I'm gonna let you go. Can you go first in this regard, business assistant during construction for third two block over Island Avenue and Perry? And both of mine and Luke's are presentations, um, or discussions only, I guess, obviously, say. Go ahead, Luke. The floor is yours.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, oh, I can't share my screen. Um.
Do you need sharing capability or you're good?
Well, while Melissa's working on that, I'll kind of, I got it now. Uh, well, while Melissa's working on, oh, I don't have it now. While Melissa's working on that, um, I'll just kind of set the stage. Uh, so uh, two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, because we had that extra week in January, we talked about creating sort of a business assistant fund for businesses that were um uh, affected by construction around town. Um, really appreciate all the feedback that I got from folks during that meeting, um, as well as uh folks who individually reached out to me um, and gave me their feedback. It was very, very helpful. Um, and so I've tried to address that feedback and come back with another proposal, um, that I think will meet more of, of folks' interests here. So topics to discuss, business impacts from construction, our record of commitment as a city, desired outcomes, costs and eligibility. First off, and I touched on this last time, obviously, business impacts to construction in the short term, they're negative because orange, orange fencing, different egress ingress, ways you enter their, their, their businesses could negatively impact revenue because people may not know it's open or they may just decide I'm not gonna walk around to get into the, to the, to the business. Long term, it's positive. Improve street, streetscapes, invite more people, um, and it creates spaces that people want to be in. The city has a huge record of commitment to our businesses. Um, and this is just one more step in that direction. Um, we, we support our businesses through funding. Um, we set aside money for Main Street program. We have a full-time employee dedicated to grant application and management. We have a full-time employee dedicated to economic development. And you saw with Ron's presentation how much money those investments bring in for our businesses at no cost to our businesses. And we also do partnerships. We partner with them on those facade improvements. We accommodate their needs when we're doing street, streetscape redesigns. We allow access to city property for patio space. And we accommodate their timing when taxes are due, if they're suffering any sort of revenue decline. So the city has a, has a really great record of commitment to our businesses in this community. The desired outcomes with this program um is to retain current businesses to realize that benefit of the new streetscape. And I think this program could also be a test case for coming um streetscape investments we're gonna be making on thirty-fourth street and Varnum Avenue. So with this new proposal, I'm trying to make it more evergreen. Um, what I mean by evergreen is it's sort of applicable to any business, anytime there's a construction project. Um, there are also some um, uh, business interruption funds that I've cited here. Um, thanks to Jared Stoltz first kind of sending these my way. Um, and you can see what folks uh have funded in cities much bigger than ours. Um, eighteen thousand per business in Los Angeles, three thousand per business in Salt Lake City, Santa Ana, Honolulu, Toronto. You can see there, I'm not gonna go through them, through them all. Um, so in looking at that funding phase, I think my original proposal was just a little bit too much funding. We shouldn't be spending more money than the city of Los Angeles spends on these sorts of funds. Um, so uh, you're gonna see that then on the next few slides. Um, so addressing costs, I think one way we could positively address costs is create a program that is on a, that is on a per monthly basis. So depending on your construction, you can only get a um, uh, an amount not to exceed eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I'll talk through how I got to that figure um on a monthly basis. So if you have a construction project that is taking eight months, like the current project around the thirty-three hundred block, you can get X amount of money every month. If you've got a project that takes one month, you're only entitled to that eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I think that addresses some equity concerns that we may have from businesses. Why are you supporting them and not me? I think if we make it on a per month basis with a capped amount, I think that addresses that issue pretty well. Um, revenue sources for these programs, um, for the thirty-three hundred block, I think we can use ARPA. Um, and then for thirty-fourth street and Varnum Street coming projects with the Vision Zero um, grant funding, I think we can investigate whether visions, whether that Vision Zero grant can fund those items. Um, I've asked Mr. Kamali to kind of research that issue with Bill. They're looking into that. Um, so far, our research has discovered that there's no prohibition on that. Um, and similar sort of uh, uh, street projects across the country do include funding like this um, for these business inter- interruption programs. So hopefully, um, it can do that. The cost for the immediate, but I think the cost for those programs will be much less than what we're considering here because I think the timeline of construction will not be eight months long. The cost for the immediate program, how I arrived at the eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, um, I assumed, and this will probably not be the cost. Let's assume we have three businesses impacted, eight months of construction. Let's assume they have, um, they get the maximum eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, which I don't think they will. Um, and I'll get to that on the next slide. The potential full cost of the program is forty-five thousand dollars. So it enable us from ARPA to only commit forty-five thousand dollars. Again, I don't think we would reach there, um, but it would create the top line cost of the program um, uh, to be low and I think manageable from a city perspective. So the way eligibility would work is you would have construction that directly impacts egress or ingre- ingressive buildings. So you've got fencing around your door where you're trying to get into your place of business. The business would have to remain on site for six months following construction or repay the city. So, and business couldn't get money and then leave. Um, they would have to be goods, in good standing with the city, their licensing and their taxes paid. Um, and they'd have to provide the city with their quarterly tax payments for the twelve-month period before construction started and for the period during construction. Um, why do they have to do that? Well, that's how we figure out how much money they get. That's this, um, let me get my handy laser pointer here. That's this uh calculation here. So the way it would work is you would take the average monthly revenue before construction, that twelve-month period before construction. You would subtract it from the average monthly revenue during construction. And that would give you the monthly amount eligible, which would be capped at one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, this is why I don't think we're gonna hit that forty-five thousand dollar threshold because I think that um, when people have to go through this application process, um, I don't think we're gonna see that much of a revenue decline, but you, you, you never know. And so we're gonna, we're gonna fund it for the maximum. Um, I also reached out to Mr. Kamali, um, and he said that Thomas, um, it got, could our consultant for ARPA could run the application process for the city here, similar to how we've run other applications process. Um, so I don't think it would put too much of a burden on city staff. Um, Thomas could help us uh run this program, um, which is good to know. And then that's it. I can, uh, I'll keep it on that slide and um, open it up to, to questions from folks.
So Luke, uh, before we move on, thank you so much for taking the feedback. I think that a lot of times we might not all agree and it's been, at least with me and you, it's been seven long years. And there's times when we go back and forward forever, but I think that's something I appreciate with you is the fact that one, you realize when our concerns are set up, it's not a personal thing. It's like we have, you know, concerns and you work through them and you build consensus. So that's something that I've always, um, I always admire about you. You might be, um, a little bothered by me originally and then you go, okay, let me sit down and, and think, why is it that she's asking me? This is like, okay, it makes sense now, right? But I think that, um, having that between us and the rest of the council, it definitely helps, um, get us where we need to be. And I'm not doing twelve months of like trash can lids with you. I'm letting you know this. I, I, um, I experienced that with you. We're not doing that. But thank you so much for listening to the concerns and going back to the drawing board and hearing what we were saying, like we're, we're happy to support, but we needed a little board. And, and you brought us a lot more meat, so thank you for that. Okay? I just want to make sure you, you're acknowledged for that. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and open up the floor. Valerie, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, thank you. And thank you for putting this together. Um, I do like uh the um, changes a little bit more. Um, they make a lot more sense to me. Um, and I think uh it is something that we should look at, um, especially down the road as we make more changes to other uh business areas. Um, so I think this is a good uh kind of first step into looking at that kind of fund for the city. Um, so I don't have any questions. I think this makes sense to me um, at this point. Um, I don't have any um, uh, major questions, but thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Yep. Uh, thanks, Luke, for uh both bringing this initial idea forward and then also um bringing a revised um uh, um, proposal. So, you know, Luca mentioned that I provided some input on this and um, you know, my folks know my day jobs in transportation, uh, been both federal, local level. And um, you know, when you do a big transportation project, particularly like an on street one, like a, you know, a street car installation or a new, uh, street car being um implemented or a new bus rapid transit, you often have like uh impacts and, you know, long-term uh, long-term outcome of a project like this, streetscape improvement, new transportation is, is great, right? And sometimes there's short-term uh construction, there's short-term economic impacts. Um, so, you know, I, I, I sent Luke just for context and um, those are ones he noted, some, some examples around the country of uh what are called like business and op, business, yeah, business interruption funds or uh, you know, similar names that kind of address and look at this, look at this issue. So I, I, I like the approach. I like, I think our um, the proposed amounts are, you know, kind of in line with what uh would be uh, standard in other uh, um, in, in other jurisdictions uh with, you know, similar type projects. I like the approach that, you know, looks at actuals. Um, you know, actual impacts, not just, you know, uh, some, some particular approach. Um, and then you know, I, I think, um, given that, uh, you know, we have a, we have a proposal that can address the um, the way we uh might do it in relation to the um, uh, to the Perry Street Rhode Island project, uh, and then a, a template looking for it. So I know, um, you know, it's my suggestion to reach out to Mr. Kamali and Bill, um, to reach out to US DOT. So, you know, at least from our research, um, the, it is an eligible cost. From a federal perspective, if the specific program is implemented, it might have specific rules, but you know, given that SS four, the Safe Streets for All program is doing a lot of these projects over the country. Um, you know, a lot of them will have impacts and often they're bringing great mobility benefits, but have some short-term uh, safety improvements have, may have some short-term impacts. I have to believe this question has been answered before. Um, and I, I'm almost certain that it would be in the affirmative. So, um, you know, Mr. Kamali and Bill, you know, and you're reaching out to FHWA, Federal Highway Administration on their program and this eligibility, please. So, you know, let us know what you turn up and uh if you need additional assistance, I think, um, there as well. Uh, reaching out and uh, or if you need additional push, I'm happy to lend any assistance you need. So thank you, Luke, again, uh, for your work on this. I think it looks, I really like the approach, uh, outcomes, program design, um. And uh, yeah, and let's uh, let's see what we can uh get done. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Jared. Mr. Kamali has his stand up. Um, so I'll go to uh Daniel and then I'll give you the floor, Mr. Kamali, so you could answer the question so that we could like, um, get through, get through the order because it looks like you already have asked by the looks of it. All right. Go ahead, Daniel.
All right, thank you. Um, Luke, I just have a couple of questions. Um, um, first of all, where, when, how did you reach the one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars? Um, how did you reach that? Let me ask all my questions so that I make sure I get everything out. Um, why did you settle on six months instead of one year? And um, as far as the Vision Zero grant, using that, can you cite some other cases? I mean, you can email them to me, but I'm curious about that because I wanna, um, I wanna guard that money as much as possible to use it for our streets as much as possible. So if you could just, you know, answer those two questions and then, you know, maybe send me some cases where Vision Zero money was used for, you know, helping businesses like that. Otherwise, I, you know, I'm fine. Like I said before, I'm all in favor of protecting our businesses. And I know as somebody who's worked in restaurants that, you know, something like this could have serious impact, not only on business, but those that work there and rely on tip money. And if you don't have the foot traffic, you don't have the money coming in your pocket. So, um, uh, yeah, if you could answer those, I'd appreciate it. Thanks, Luke.
Go ahead, Luke. The floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. So I'll, I'll answer them sort of backwards. So I don't know if you just heard the conversation now from Jared, but he was sort of explaining um, uh, the Vision Zero app, the applicability of this pro- of a program like this to the Vision Zero grants. And while we couldn't find a direct, like, um, treasury says you can use this for funds. Um, the, Mr. Kamali's got his hand raised and he's gonna answer the question about the research that they've been doing. We think it, it's an allowable expense. Now, the immediate program that we're funding here does not come from Vision Zero, it would come from ARPA. The Vision Zero funding would be for future projects on thirty-fourth street and Varnum. Um, so that's that question. Um, and then the second question was around um, the period of time. So the period of time is tied to the period of construction. Um, so it's an eight-month So it's an eight-month period because it's August through March and construction will be done in, in April. So that's why it's an eight-month period because that was the period of construction. And then the first question with respect to the forty-five thousand dollars, you can see right down here, or sorry, the eighteen hundred and seventy-five. I, I created a, I wanted a top-line figure for the potential cost of the program. Let's assume all three businesses can provide evidence that they had revenue decline that hit some sort of maximum amount. What would be that top-level cost? And I think forty-five thousand dollars comes out to fifteen thousand dollars per business, which is in more aligned with the programs that have run from other municipalities, that fifteen thousand dollar level. So running it at forty-five thousand dollars makes us more in line with other municipal programs. And then if you run it at four, for forty-five thousand dollars, the capped amount per month is eighteen hundred and seventy-five. Because forty-five thousand dollars, because divided by three businesses, divided by eight months is eighteen hundred and seventy-five. So that's how you, that's how you arrive at that figure there.
So, so you could, because the floor was thirty.
Because if not, we cannot go back and forth. You guys know the rules. If you ask your questions, he'll go ahead and answer. If you need clarity, raise your hand and we'll, and we'll go on, okay? Luke, is there anything else you need to add regarding that?
Just that it's fifteen, the, the total maximum you could get is fifteen thousand dollars per business because that's in line with what businesses usually get. And that's how you get to forty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand times three is forty-five.
Thank you. So before we move on to anything, I haven't spoken either. Mr. Kamali, can you go ahead and answer the first part of our question and Jared's question and Luke's question? Go on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to let you know that yesterday at eleven o'clock, when you guys had the press conference, we had a kickoff meeting with Federal Highway Department for SS4A. The question was raised and they told us that they're gonna look into it and get back to us regarding the stretch from Thirty-First to Varnum and the impact on the businesses. So I will keep the mayor and council, you know, informed once, once I get the information. So, and I would like to say thank you to Luke for this, this is slides, but I want to bring something to the last slide that we, we want to make sure that the businesses are in a good standing with the state and the city. So that makes a big difference and I do appreciate that. And I have Tom, Thomas that is working on the application. We're gonna do the same thing that we did for the small businesses. And we're gonna go through the vetting process and make sure that everything is gonna be in compliance with the Treasury Department. And I do appreciate all of you. Thank you.
All right, perfect. So Danielle, I'm gonna save you the one, one minute and then I'll go back and answer, uh, Luke, because there's one more thing I, I needed to add to. I need to, I haven't even spoken. Go ahead, Danielle. Thank you, Mr. Kamali. So I should go to answer at least three questions that council members had and myself.
Um, my clarification, Luke, was just, um, the commitment to remain six months and not like longer than six months. It wasn't over the period of payment. It was the commitment. Like, why can't we make it a year? Why is it just six months? Thank you.
Yep, um, that was just seemed, seemed like a reasonable time period for me. There was not much more beyond that.
Can I answer that, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Kamali, and I have input as well.
Yeah, right now we are looking at the project to be completed in March. After March, I don't see any interruption to the businesses. And I do appreciate that timing, Luke. So hopefully the project is gonna be completed by March if the weather permits. So, you know, if everything goes well, I guarantee you I'm gonna finish that project sometimes in, in March. And we're just waiting for the weather to allow us to finish the Perry Street. Because right now the USERS are working on Phase Two. Phase Two will be completed very soon. And the only thing that I have to do is the pavers on Perry Street between Thirty-third and the circle, which needs warmer weather, which we need to have a fifty degrees, you know, temperature. So I think Luke is on the right track and I do appreciate your timing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So thank you so much, Mr. Kamali, for being proactive. We definitely miss you, but we also know that being the person that runs the city, you have to, you cannot be at two places at once. And if we want to make sure we secure the money, it's not just the press conference. You know, it's not just a lobbying. It's like making sure hands are on it because it's a high profile. I mean, we've been featured everywhere. So our team will make sure the eyes are dotted, the teeth are crossed, three, four, five, six, seven times. And that's the reason why we also, um, award the money we awarded because they see that we're active and we have not returned money, you know, and every money has been accounted for, right? And they're in top of the latest regulations. So, Mr. Kamali, uh, Luke, I think that the suggestion to be, uh, to stay in the city for a year, if you could extend into that, or if you're open to that, would be good. You know, so that way, I mean, I don't see them going anywhere, but I think that definitely will help, you know? Um, because I think both businesses are gonna stay here anyways. The other thing I was gonna tell you guys, regarding the other parts of Rhode Island, even Perry, um, the process USERS works or where, you know, USERS and Rhode Island works very efficiently through it. So I don't recall that, maybe I'm wrong, I don't see wrong here, but Mr. Kamali, I recall this staying in one business for a month, even in the Rhode Island project. So that also will help some, okay? So time is up. Um, I'll leave it at that. I don't, I don't need to add anything else. All right, we're good. Thank you, Luke. Look, it's like, I know I, I have basically worked with you for seven long years. So has Kamali, so has Alma, so has, I think Chief is like the one from the team that's a little bit less and, and Hopkins as well. All right, okay, so moving on to the next item, can I go ahead and add? I'll make it very quick, guys, because it's just a quick discussion and I'll, and I'll give you guys, because we need to find a solution to this. All right? So, I know, Luke, you took both of our times. Uh, can I have five minutes on the clock for this item, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Probably moving second in discussion, objection, session, hearing nine. So this is a brief discussion, you guys. As you know, various nonprofits have reached out to us to request money for ARPA. Right? We have to have a fair chance for any nonprofit to come into us. I did talk to other cities, including Comer Manor, how they went about. They basically put a grant together and, you know, Thomas could do that with Mr. Kamali and saying, we have grants available for nonprofit that works in this and this sectors within the city. Right? And therefore it could be a catch to the various nonprofits, whether it's, I'm not even gonna mention to make sure, but you know who the nonprofits are, right? Because in the last meeting, I did not left my, my little pillow was not warm on both sides when I don't want us to start creating programs that are so tightly tailored to, you know, to fit one organization. This way, if we allocate funds, even if it's by thousand dollars, you know, make it up to forty, fifty thousand dollars, right? We could have a more detailed discussion on this. You know, they put the, you know, information out. Uh, the various nonprofits that work for the series could apply, right? And then our team of very diligent, you know, city manager and Tom and everybody else who brings some of those projects forward to us for us to vote and award them money. Obviously, this is not recreational programs, right? Because recreation community has their own grants. But that way it fulfilled any, any of the other nonprofits, whether it's, uh, cat and rescue was ours, whether it's like after school, whether it's food. Any of those nonprofits could apply and therefore we need to close that cycle for two reasons. Our city manager and a whole entire team need to come up with things that we already have a contract for before the end of the year. If the things are not contractual, we can do nothing about that. And we'll have to give the money back. And I know for a fact, nobody here wants to give one penny back from, uh, the ARPA funding. So this will allow for it to give one turn and allow some of those nonprofits to serve our cities, you know, the cafes in the world and so on and so on, to be able to apply for some funding with more or less that open caveat and they could, you know, Mr. Kamali could create an application. And therefore we don't have to have a nonprofit come in, like, you know, if we have a Catali ad, you know, come in last week and then if we have artworks now coming next week, we cannot do that. We cannot tailor the programs to a specific organization because we could get ourselves in trouble because it has to be, um, open bidding, right? With a little bit more honest. So this will solve any and all those, all those nonprofits that have requested money. And it will solve the solution from the staff to do this one-time thing, award the funding, get into contracts with them, ignore for us to be able to maintain the relations, okay? So that is my proposal to you guys. And if you guys have any feedback, let me know. But right now it's just a conversation, but I'm gonna put it with you guys and now present it in the work session with a little bit more details. But I think that'll be the answer to be able to help the nonprofits in the city that work or other nonprofits that work directly within our city, uh, with our residents, right? And, and solve the problem instead of having, uh, because we should not be bringing any of the people that were supposed to be potentially being granters into our meetings because if not, it seems a little bit biased. And this way we'll eliminate us doing that. And the staff will do what they did with the small businesses, the staff will do what they did with everything else. And they could like swipe in an application and make it happen. And we'll take care of those that are taking care of our community without having to do the work ourselves because our staff is little. You know, there's only so much they could do. And this way they could follow the same paperwork as, you know, the schools have had in the past with reporting and blah, blah, blah. Okay? So I'll open up the floor to you, but it's a simple, it's a simple idea to be able to, um, solve, um, the issue and the problem that we had in front of us. Okay? All right, Jared, I'm gonna, uh, open the floor to you.
Yep, no, thanks for that note on ARPA funding. And again, we're, you know, very lucky that Congress provided that resource to us. And, um, you know, it, the funds have a limit and we need to make sure we spend that, we obligate those funds before the deadline or else they get pulled back. Um, you know, I'm, I'm our federal funding guru. I care a lot about this point. Compliance is really important. And, you know, I said this in the last meeting, when this idea kind of came, this, there was a presentation around, uh, specific organizational funding. You have to do competitive procurement. You have to do, you have to have, uh, open competition for, um, federal funds. So, you know, that is, uh, very important. That's true, even though these are, you know, kind of open-ended formula funds that were provided by the Treasury. Um, it's part of a COVID relief originally, but, um, you know, appreciate the approach we're taking. Uh, if we have the space in our budget to be able to accommodate a project like this, um, as we're trying to spend down the money before deadline for, in, lined up other priorities. I'm certainly in favor of us doing something like that. And there's a number of other communities nearby that have done a similar program. So I think we can kind of look to their program design and approach, uh, and, um, model our practices on, uh, what's worked. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Valerie?
Um, yeah, I agree. I think this approach is a, a better, more equitable, um, fair approach to nonprofits so that they know there's funding out there, they can apply to it, and they don't have to come directly to the city councils, specifically for their own programs. Um, I think that makes sense. So thank you.
Perfect. Danielle and Luke?
Um, time is up. Do we want to add some time?
So I'll go ahead and request to add at least three more minutes to give everybody at least one round around. If you're good, just put your thumbs up and you're fine. So I'm gonna add three minutes to the clock. Oh, you guys are good? All right. I love it. Luke, you wanted to say something?
No, I was, I think we were good with the adding of time.
Okay, so we'll close it. We'll work on the documents with Mr. Kamali and we'll move on.
I wanted to make a comment. I just said.
Danielle, we just said, okay.
Lena, I think we, I think we, I think we were raising our thumbs to the addition of time.
Time, yeah, I asked for it.
Okay, so can we have a motion on the floor for two more minutes? It's probably moved and second. Any discussion? Objection, attention. Uh, two minutes have been added to the clock. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, first of all, um, I don't know where the ARPA thing came from. When I made the presentation and you're all more than welcome to go back and look at the video on YouTube. I never once said anything about ARPA money. I wanted to add five thousand dollars to the budget line item on an annual basis for this nonprofit in our city to help take care of the cats. I don't know where ARPA came up. I know somebody mentioned ARPA and all of a sudden it went all the way to ARPA. ARPA was never in my purview. Oh, not my purview. It was never in my presentation. So just to clarify that, um, as, as far as everything else, Mayor, I'll look forward to your presentation at business meeting. But again, never once in my presentation did I ask for ARPA money. I'm still not asking for ARPA money. I fully intend on asking for a five thousand dollar line item for this group to do this service for the city like they do in Colmar Manor. Thank you.
Go ahead, Luke, and I'll go ahead and answer after because that's not the way it works in Comer Manor. Go on.
I'm all good with this proposal, Mayor. I think it's smart, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As a point of clarity, I did spoke to the mayor of Comer Manor and I also spoke to the city manager of Comer Manor. The way they went about it is basically the way I just described you was a grand opening. And that's how they were able to award funding. The problem that we have, if we put it in the budget for one organization, where is the Joes, Art Works Now, Cafe, Marin Elementary, Thomas Stone Elementary and so on and so on and so on. All the nonprofits are gonna want five thousand dollars for each of them and then we're gonna position that we're having favoritism. But back to the answer, Comer Manor, I just spoke to the mayor and their city manager. And they both specifically say they opened a grant process and they funded it from ARPA. It is not part of the budget and it's only funded, uh, for this. So that's a good thing about also having friends, um, in other cities that you could call and say, hey, can you explain to me how this work? And this is something we need to do, but Mr. Kamali calls, so I'll reach out. Mr. Kamali, I see your hand before time runs out. I'll, I'll, I'll reset my other comment. Go ahead. Mr. Kamali, you have, you're muted.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. No matter where the money is coming from, I have to go through the public process. As Jared said, we have to have a competitive vetting process and I'll be glad to do that. But my budget is so tight for this year. That's why I'll, I'll look to mayor and council to give me some ARPA money. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. And I'll be forward like a little bit more detail proposal, including, um, thank you, Luke and Jared and Valerie, like, you know, and Danielle also for your comment. Uh, when it comes to Comer Manor, uh, Mr. Kamali, I'll ask them for their application process so we go on it, but if not, we could do something similar to what we had done because it still has to hold the same standards that Marinier has when it comes to reporting and everything else, uh, regardless of it. Okay? So thank you guys for that. Okay, so next item, item number ten. Proclamation and recognition and celebration of Black History Month. I will be presenting a proclamation for Black History Month. Can you guys put it on the screen, please, Melly?
And this proclamation, um, is already all over, um, our outlets. Um, I think within the first twenty-four hours of, um, Black History Month, you know, so the very brief recap, um, prior to me being mayor, we did not have a proclamation. And the flag in City Hall went up since day one, I think maybe right before the day one. Uh, so the first day was already up and again, that's been up since I've been, um, since I've been mayor. So prior to that, we didn't have, um, any of this. All right, so in saying that, whereas African-American community has made a meaningful, significant contribution to City of Marinier, State of Maryland in the United States and the world. And whereas the month of February is nationally recognized as Black History Month. And whereas in nineteen fifteen, Dr. Carl Woodwill Wilson noted black scholar and some of former slaves founded Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History as well. And thank you, Melly. Whereas Dr. Wilson initiated Black History Week of February twelfth, nineteen twenty-six. And for many years, the second week of February chosen so as to coincide with the birthday of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, which is celebrated by black people in the United States. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded and became established as Black History Month. And is now celebrated all over the North America, Canada and the Great Britain. And whereas many black people have made the city of Marinier their homes in spite of the horror attempts to exclude them and make them insignificant, make, and they made significant contributions to the city, state and nation. Whereas Black History, American history should be taught to students in elementary along with ethics studies. And whereas the African-American community has served in the US Armed Forces since the First War, even though back home they were, they had no rights and segregation, what's that is speak. We honor their sacrifices and we celebrate our veterans. Whereas today we celebrate and affirm the importance of black health and wellness to our community through our state and nation. Whereas we celebrate the diversity of black people in the city of Marinier and our nation and the black diaspora, whether self-identify as African, African-American, Afro-Latinos, Afro-Caribbean, Afro-Asian or black. And whereas we recognize this year's Black History Month theme, African-American and the arts. And whereas we acknowledge systematic racism has led to African-American being more likely to die of an early age for more causes, more commonly made this, made their nose and impacted by health inequalities through the healthcare system that have traumatized the black community.
and impacted by health inequalities through the healthcare system that have traumatized the black community. And whereas we celebrate black health, wellness, including the legacy of black scholars, midwives, nurses, doctors, practitioners of not only Western medicine, but all other indigenous ways of promoting health and healing through a black diaspora. And whereas during the Black History Month, we elevate the achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economy. Cultural, spiritual, and political. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued needs to battle racism. Stand up and be an ally and build a society that lives up to the democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Maranier is proud to honor the history and contribution of African-Americans in our community through Maryland and our nation. And whereas the city of Maranier will continue to work towards becoming an inclusive city in which all the community, past, present, and future are respected and the African-American community is recognized for the contribution to our city and to the world. And whereas African-Americans play a key role in the advancement of this city. And whole and world in multiple fields of studies, including and limited to the arts, culture, science, math, politics, history, business, music, sports, medicine, economic development, education, agriculture, literature, dance, high technology, human and civil rights, including LGBTQI plus rights. There is no field the African-American community has not positively impacted and has advanced. And whereas the city of Maranier commits to do everything in its power to the man, we all seek a greater understanding and implement changes to ensure racism and the unjust treatment of any person is not tolerated in a way or form within the city of Maranier. And whereas Black History Month is a time to all citizens of Maranier to remember the contributions and legacy of those who helped building our nation, far against prejudice, to secure lives of dignity, opportunity for all of our citizens, advance the cause of civil rights of all Americans, and strengthening our family and communities. And now therefore be a result, I Selena Benitez, Mayor of the City of Maranier, do have, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in the City of Maranier and every day from today and on. The City of Maranier will display an African flag at City Hall in the month of February. Celebrating natural Black History Month and urge all the citizens to celebrate African-American culture heritage, cultural and continue our efforts year round to create a world that is more just, peaceful, equitable, and prosperous for all and stand up to injustice. Uh, voting right, oppression, protection of human rights and civil rights. Today and every day is Black History Month. And there is my beautiful, beautiful signature, like poor staff, they go through it. Um, so I also want to give a big thank you to both schools, Thomas Stone and Maranier Elementary. And their PTOs, they have monthly event going through the whole entire month and quite a few nonprofits in the state. Me, uh, Constanmerura also talked about the three events that the city will be hosting and that information is going to go out. And we look forward to also celebrating the two Afri, um, Afro-Caribbean festivals that we do through the year. As well as Juneteenth. And basically most of them, you know, we touch even our Latino Heritage Month also touches um, the Afro-Latino culture, which is um, always wonderful to see the intersection, especially when it comes to Afro-Caribbean uh, festivals. All right. So in reading that, thank you guys so much. And I'm definitely going to need a lot more water. And we look forward to a wonderful month. Okay? All right. New business, item number eleven. Presentation and discussion, the renovation of police department basement. Uh, city manager, uh, Coach Kamali will present and make, I'm already, I'm already folding inside the page. You can use, as you can tell, like, I'm like getting closer and closer to the phone. Um, recommendations to Mayor and Council on starting the renovation of the police department base. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, as you know that I sent you on Sunday, my recommendation, but I go over the game. So regarding the police basement renovation, as you know, that we have three hundred thousand dollars that which we received the bond bill from the state. What we're gonna do as Chief explained it to Valerie, we're gonna have two new offices, a new fitness area, new new simulation area, new break room, two new restrooms and new storage or filing room. And we're gonna have a new flooring and ceilings. As a result of that, we put the RFP out. I do appreciate Chief Austin. He put the RFP out with help of Rosio. We put it on e-market a place. And we received only two proposals, as you see it on the screen. One from Centennial Contractors and the other one is for the users. Uh, we reviewed the proposal with architects and Chief Austin. So the lowest bid is from Centennial Contractors, which is four hundred thousand four twenty-five dollars. And uh, we recommend after our going through the review process, we recommend to the mayor and council uh, that the contract be awarded to Centennial uh, general contractors. And uh, in order to do that and complete this project, as you know that, as I provided in my recommendation letter, we need four hundred sixty thousand dollars, which uh, four hundred thousand fifty-two goes to the contractor plus ten percent, you know, contingency. We need to have the architects to oversee the project with myself and Chief, which is going to have a cost of twelve thousand five hundred eighty dollars. And then we need to have a third party inspection in order to test the concrete samples and the steel framing, which is going to cost us five thousand seven hundred ninety-five. So it brings us down to a total of four hundred sixty thousand dollars. I am asking Mayor and Council to allocate one hundred sixty thousand dollars from ARPA money, which I'm sure Luke is not going to like me anymore. Because I'm asking for a hundred more, hundred sixty thousand dollars more. But this is how we're gonna complete this project, which is going to help our police department and it's going to be a good facility for our community. And the project length is going to take two months. Hopefully, because it's inside, the weather has nothing to do with that. And Chief and I will be overseeing that project with Architect Adams Design Group. So I am here if you have any question and we provide you all the information. Unless Mayor and Council have further question for me or Chief.
All right. So I'm gonna open up the floor if, if it is nine fifteen, if you're good. I think the proposal at this point from Mr. Kamali is to add the remaining uh, that is needed uh, to ARPA. I did send him a lot, said I'm happy to join it. So he did answer that um, the quotes will hold for a furry boat. So we could bring it up to the work session in March. If we need anything else that you guys want to have a question for, but if not, go straight out to um, a vote, because this is definitely like our review of it, right? But uh, just um, I need to hear your feedback. If you're good, good. Pass if you have a question, uh, go ahead and ask them. And uh, thank you, Mr. Kamali for the recommendation. And to point out, more than two thirds of the cost of this project is money that we got and allocated for somewhere else. We just have to put the last little bit um, to complete something that we have been working on for what it feels like a decade. And probably it's a decade because I think the conversations were happening before we joined, right, Luke? Somewhere around that time. Okay? All right. And we're already seven in. All right. So uh, Luke, I'm gonna go with you and then I'm gonna go around the clock from where I see you. Okay? Go ahead.
Totally supported. Not mad at you, Mr. Kamali. Um, so let's go. We'll, 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 we'll figure it out. I think we have the money and we'll just, we'll, we'll figure it out. Pot's all. Thanks.
Perfect. Jared?
Yep, I'm supportive and you know, just for context, obviously you can have the best independent cost estimate, but when bids come in, sometimes they are going to reflect, um, you know, may, may reflect additional call, uh, additional, you know, changes in the market, et cetera, so forth. We did a competitive procurement, um, and we're moving forward with the um, with the uh, lowest, uh, lowest and most responsive bid. So thank you. I'm supportive.
Thank you, Jared. Valerie?
Yeah, me too. I'm also supportive. Thank you.
Danielle?
Um, yeah, I mean, wh- what else can we do? I mean, I think chipping in twenty-five percent of this project, I think we're, we're, we're getting off good. So I mean, I hate to see the money leave from ARPA because of pot's all, but you know, that basement, Selena's right, this basement has been needing to be done for a very long time. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much. I'm in favor.
I'm not going to keep you guys up. You know how I feel. Let's move it forward. If, if it doesn't sound like the council has any questions, so move it over to like voting for um, on it. Do you think I will ask for the work session for us to go through the line items from ARPA to see like what has not been exhausted at this point? In order for us to have a better sense of what funding um, we have and we don't have and what um, Mr. Kamali can also present in the new regulations from ARPA that could potentially change some of those numbers on it. But the idea is everyone that by the latest, we'll check it in before June, obviously to figure out, we need to subsidize some of the stuff from our, from ARPA into our budget. But by the latest September, we need to have like, you know, whatever hasn't been spent needs to be allocated. Uh, we have discussed it to pot's hall and have the books sealed and move on. And then like right on December before the deadline, Mr. Kamali can make another presentation and said, there's one dollar here that hasn't been given. And then we move it on to ARPA because you're not supposed to. At this point, we have been told that after uh, the end of the month of December, once you allocate, you cannot switch it. You have to have a contract that says this one dollar is allocated for whatever, think candy, whatever you want, right? Because if you decide to go, oh, no, now I want this dollar for something else, that dollar is going back uh, to the treasury. It's not going with us. So if we like, Mr. Kamali, can you please work on a deadline marker so with the council, so where what it looks like? You know, obviously like, you know, right before the budget closes, right? Right before Sept- our September meeting. And October, if you want, so that way like we make the last allocation of the month of, if anything, like an example, if we have a program and whatever reason, like, you know, the persons have not um, have not followed through and we decide to reallocate it for something else, like if we put five dollars for candy and we're like, go we don't want that, we only spent three dollars, then those two dollars are going to go to whatever fund it is. But I want to make sure we give our team enough time to submit uh, whatever report is needed. And that shows um, that the money is contractual to go somewhere. Which in this way, um, I know we have discussed it, you know, more than enough times in other meetings. We have said like, you know, we're gonna clea-, you know, clear the, the the deck and whatever money we could put towards pot's house, it'll go towards pot's hall. So between the surplus of this year, let's make sure we have a surplus. And whatever we have of ARPA should be able to accommodate some of the funding to cover um, you know, some more of pot's hall. All right? And I'll stay there. So you guys have your marching orders, I guess. Mr. Kamali, do you really want us to add something? Oh, is that an old hand?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure that I have Mayor and Council consent move forward because the contractor and the market is just, you know, is not as stable. And I want to make sure that to move forward with the contract awarding, the notice to proceed. So you guys allow me to do that. I do appreciate that.
You're good.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
So sign that contract tomorrow so we could hold on to that price because I know for a fact, uh, it could change like within a minute. Right. Thank you so much. And thank you, Chief, for staying uh, this lane, the endless nine-year team stays up um, taking care of the city. I appreciate you as well. Okay? All right. Moving on to the next item and board approval minutes, the Mayor and Council vote on approving the minutes. On November seventh legislative meeting, December fifth, uh, public meeting of safety legislation, both of those are twenty twenty-three. December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three work session, January second, twenty twenty-four legislative meeting. I'm putting a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as presented. Can I have a second?
Second, again, sorry.
Yeah, three hundred years later. Second, any discussion? Objection, abstentions? Hearing none. This minutes have been approved. Meli, thank you so, so much. I don't want to see old minutes in my life. So that means that um, Meli, thank you so much. As a recognition to you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That means that we are up today with all the minutes, including the backlog of minutes. That is like part of the things that I promised that we were going to get done. And thank you. We have a very efficient team to make it happen. So Meli, thank you and thank anybody that contribute to, to that. Um, and poor Meli has to hear us like sometimes three different times between the minutes and the actual meeting. So thank you, Meli, for that. All right. Moving on to the last item of the agenda, uh, can you put the events on the screen, Meli, please? All right. The public hearing is scheduled for my twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Ekhan, April sixth at the Nature Center from ten to twelve. Mount Rainier Day is May eighteen, eleven to five. And our committee is already moving and rocking and and working for a big, big birthday, one fourteen, next year's one fifteen, because we got robbed from our one-ten. Thank you, COVID. All right. So in saying that, can I have a motion to um, adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Objection, extension? I know, Jared, you took too long. Uh, hearing done. Uh, this meeting has come to an end. Thank you guys so much. It is nine twenty-two. Um, Jared Ping, thank you guys so much as well, Mr. Kamali, for all the late hours and for all the support you give us. We couldn't do this without you guys. So we're definitely uh, starting the year, you know, really efficiently and rocking like you guys could do it. So thank you. Look forward to a wonderful budget hearing. So have a good night there, buddy. And um, bye. See you.
Thank you.
All right, I know. Good night. Bye.